From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 8, 6:00 PM special meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin tonight's -- oh, excuse me, not tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor Perez, but do you mind doing it tonight? And following the pledge, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Okay, before we hear item one, I would like to introduce our interpreter, Mr. Fernando Lopez, who is available for anyone in the audience requiring translation of the proceedings from English to Spanish, or that would require a translator to address the board. Mr. Lopez, would you please share this information?
Para el beneficio de las personas que no hablan inglés, solamente español, la junta de supervisores, me han contratado a mí y Fernando López para interpretar los procedimientos. En la mesa de atrás hay unos audífonos para las personas que no hablan inglés y solamente español. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now consider item number one under County Council's office, and that is a presentation of draft alternative supervisory district maps and public hearing of the 2021 supervisory redistricting process, as well as direction to staff and consultants. And for that presentation, I will call on our county council, Margot Rezon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight's special meeting of your board is the next public hearing in the redistricting process. As I've reported during our previous public hearings, your board began this process in February of 2021. We held redistricting hearings and workshops, numerous workshops and hearings through late spring and summer, and your board has held public hearings on September 28 and October 26. Service groups and chambers of commerce have been contacted, and Mr. Jason Weeby with the CIO's office has made numerous presentations. The county has engaged in robust public outreach, seeking public engagement and involvement. Following your October 26 meeting and direction given by your board, the county's demographer, Paul Mitchell, created map A2. Mr. Mitchell is here tonight and will explain map A2 and is available to assist in changing or drawing any additional changes your board might want considered. After Mr. Mitchell's presentation, the next item is a presentation that Lori Pesante requested to make on behalf of the Equitable Maps Coalition. She made this request at your last meeting, and it is recommended she be allowed to present. I believe she has a PowerPoint for your review as well. Following her presentation, it will be appropriate to receive public comment, including having Mr. Weeby share additional comments received by the county since your last meeting. Outside council, Mr. Chris Scannell is present again this evening and is available to answer questions your board may have. Finally, I'd again like to thank Deputy County Counsel Stephanie Bowie, who is seated to my left, and Jason Weeby and Amanda Reese with the CIO's office for their ongoing participation and assistance. Before I ask Mr. Mitchell to make his presentation, I would like to say that in reviewing map A2 that was suggested by your board at your last public hearing to be drawn, in looking at it and working with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Scannell and staff, we noticed that there are a number of areas that are called census-designated places, that are areas that the Census Bureau has designated as a particular place. And while it is not a number one or number two in the priority rankings of the criteria of things to be considered, it is, I believe, number three in the Fair Maps Act. And in map A2, there are a number of census-designated places where minor adjustments to the proposed lines can unite those census-designated places. And at this point, I planned on reading those into the record for your consideration. However, while we have the other side of the room technologically connected, my computer screen is dark at this moment, so I don't know if Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Scannell can read those. I apologize. Oh, okay. So perhaps after public comment return, and we will have that, I will have a computer, and we will also have that list complete.
That would be great.
So I would invite Mr. Mitchell to make his presentation.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me here again. This presentation is the same presentation as we provided the last time, in case members of the community are here for the first time, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, but I will go a little quicker, just for expediency. The process that we utilized was starting with community of interest testimony. We had hearings here, we had hearings online, we had hearings in English and hearings in Spanish, and that process drove the creation of potential draft maps. There's a process that we utilized to really focus on minimizing divisions of cities and census-designated places, as was discussed, and ensuring that we are drawing lines basically from those communities of interest up. We released those maps, and every time we've had a map, that map has been available for the public, it's been available online. Upon request, we provided the GIS shapefiles to those who would want to be able to look at those with more detail. When we look at the existing lines, as you know, these existing lines were implemented just a few years ago, but the population data that was utilized in that redistricting was from the 2010 census. So when we look at the existing populations, after we have them adjusted by the state, so there's a reallocation of the prison population, we see a total deviation in the plan of nine and a half percent. That means that the difference between the most overpopulated district and the most underpopulated district is just that nine and a half, within the 10% safe harbor that's utilized in redistricting. There's also, when we talk about redistricting, we talk about balancing total population. We also talk about drawing districts in a way that's equitable and fair, especially regarding any potential Voting Rights Act concerns. And so in this redistricting, we start with two majority-minority districts, which your legal counsel can speak to in terms of their effectiveness, and those are districts four and five. And so as we've worked, we've worked to make sure that we are not eroding or diluting that voting power and working closely with your legal counsel. We received through the process--
Chair, may I ask a question? Thank you. Can we go back to the CVAP screen that you had up a second ago? Just want to make sure I understand. Does this say that District 5 has a current CVAP of 63.7? Currently, right now, as of the 29 agreement? Is that correct?
Well, as of the most recent estimates from the Census Bureau. So as of the ACS estimates that were released in 2019--
Okay.
--using those figures, the population that was in District 5, as up to date as the information we have, is 63.7% Latinos.
So is that including new census numbers from 2020?
So the data that was being referenced is the ACS 2015-19, which is a five-year average. It was actually released in February 2020, but it is from February -- it is from 2019. Theoretically, they'll have new data in four months' time, when the new ACS gets released, if it does. The census has put some question marks about if and when that's going to be released, but for our purposes, this is kind of the gold standard number in trying to interpret its Voting Rights Act concerns.
Okay. I thought it was pretty significantly lower than that. I was under a different impression, but sometimes my memory doesn't serve me perfectly. I'm not alone, I think.
It's been in this range since the lawsuit before also, in the low to mid-60s.
Thank you.
Great. So we've received a lot of spoken testimony, we've received online maps of people drawing their communities of interest, we've received draft full plans from members of the community, and those were utilized in part in creating some draft maps that we created for you. In total, we came up with three draft maps, A, B, and C. There was also a draft that you asked to come forward as one of the maps for us to consider, that was a draft map. It's called the Equity Plan, and I think that we'll be hearing from some folks from the community to talk about their plan during this hearing as well. At the last hearing, we were asked to look at the concepts around draft map A, which was largely the preservation of much of the existing architecture and lines that we have, and see what would happen if we made kind of a minimal change to balance the population. And so that is our map A2. Each map is provided as a paper, you know, PDF that you're going to look at electronically or print out, and also an online web map. And when we look at -- I'm going to go, we have Plan A in here, but I'm going to go straight to Plan A2, because that's the one that we discussed and that the supervisors have not seen on the screen yet. So Plan A2 from a distance looks a lot like your existing plan, and the actual change from the old plan is only -- the intent of the change was only down in this part here, where we have what we've kind of referred to as a triangle, that is, population that was moved from District 4 and District 5. And as we know-- I'm sorry. District 2 into District 5. As we know, the deviation for the current plan was already only 9.5, and so now when we have it and look at that, our deviation goes down to 5.1. So just that small change leaves a lot of that deviation concern. And again, the district's CVAP stays the same. When we look at Plan B, we went through all this at the last hearing, and definitely that's something that, if you did want to come back to, we have all of that in here. And I think we're going to have a presentation on a community plan that will follow mine. And I'll just finish up by saying that all these plans are available. They're available, like I said, both here for people in attendance and also online, and in PDFs and in web maps, so you can go down to the street level. And if you have questions about any of those plans, I'm prepared not only to look at them on the screen, but if we do get to a point later this evening where you want to get population numbers of what a potential change could be, we would be able to handle that here from the meeting. I'll just be able to link into my server to do that.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to -- well, actually, what's that? Yes. Are we going to hear the Equitable Maps Coalition presentation before we do public comment?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you. So I guess we will -- now would be the time for that presentation, if we could have our presenters come up.
On TV, my name is Lori Pesante, and I am the Director of Civic Engagement Programming for the De La Suerte Foundation, but I am tonight a mere conduit for the Equitable Map Coalition of Kern County, who at this time I would like to ask to stand up. Please stand up if you support the Equity Coalition map for Kern County. Thank you very much for working together to create the map that I'm going to talk about tonight. How did we create it? Well, we started by sending out surveys online and at food banks, vaccination clinics, and flea markets, and then when people said on the survey that they were interested in learning more about redistricting, we invited them to join us every week to learn more about redistricting, to attend county meetings, and they have had a presence, a significant presence at every single meeting. Indeed, there were several meetings where it really helped people to be able to participate, because there were many problems with especially non-English-speaking folks being able to provide public comment, or people participating remotely. We learned about how it's on the very first page of the Constitution that this board is required to fairly allocate political power in this redistricting process across all five districts. In particular, the Fair Maps Act was passed in 2019. I would like everyone to consider what they're seeing on the screen right now, because filtering all of the comments that are going to be made tonight through these criteria is the way to truly evaluate the maps. In particular, I want to highlight that the large red box to the right is an inset of number two, compliance with the Voting Rights Act, and you're going to hear a lot about that tonight. But really, what we considered as a coalition was, what is the total population of constitutionally protected class members in Kern County? And when I say constitutionally protected classes, that means African Americans, Asian Americans, Native Americans, and Latinos, and in particular, the Voting Rights Act comes into play when we're talking about our Latino friends and neighbors, because they are the ones who live in Kern County in sufficient numbers to trigger the requirement that this board draws a Voting Rights Act district. When we hear comments about CDPs, geographic integrity of census-designated places, or elevating communities of interest, I really want to highlight that those cannot be elevated above the Voting Rights Act obligations, and in particular, the input that was provided throughout this process has been related to the farmworker communities, our historically marginalized Black communities, and our mountain communities, to just name a few. But some of the other communities of interest identified by the supervisors themselves have not been as fully reflected in the record that we have noticed until recently. We also made a decision as a coalition not to look at any partisan data whatsoever, because we determined that the truly strong, effective map for Kern County for the next 10 years is one that takes very seriously what the Fair Maps Act requires, which is no partisan favoritism or discrimination, and we interpreted that to include consideration of where current supervisors live. In particular, I want to highlight that this process requires thinking four dimensionally. It's not just about where we are today or tomorrow, but how this map has to serve Kern County residents, all of them, for the next 10 years. We have heard a lot about percentages of eligible voters, also known as CVAP, Citizens of Voting Age Population, people who are 18 years of age or older, and citizens such that they are eligible to vote should they choose to register and exercise that right. But indeed, we really want to be very mindful of the context surrounding that. Fair allocation of political power in Kern County needs to take into account the fact that 2020 census data identifies that close to three-quarters of our population are people of color, and most of them constitutionally protected class members. So we really need to think about what is going to be that effective Voting Rights Act district to serve those constitutionally protected classes. It is currently the case that our map is not effective. The Equitable Map Coalition plan is effective, not just for today, but for tomorrow and the next years as well, because in District 4 and District 5, all of those voter registration, turnout, CVAP, and population of constitutionally protected class members are at levels that are appropriate, such that it is balanced. They are not packing people into districts, and it's not cracking them. In District 3, you see there's a yellow box there. It's because we're very, very close to triggering the Voting Rights Act obligations in District 3. If we don't want to have to come back here in a few years when that number gets to 50% or more, then the Equity Coalition map has you covered. It is drawing a District 3 that will accommodate that growth in the future. All of the input that was received prior to the last hearing really highlighted the farmworker communities east Bakersfield, and we just had a conversation recently about the Kern River Parkway, and the mountain communities. A lot of people came out to our weekly sessions from the mountain communities. Every single major community in the mountains has been represented in the coalition. We also took into account many equity indicators. We looked at a ton of them. We looked at a ton of them, too. This is pollution burden, and you can see already how our underserved communities bear the worst pollution burdens, especially in the west part of the county. Housing cost burdens. You can see immediately where the district lines can be drawn to identify those folks that are underserved in the housing crisis that we're facing right now. The districts have to be drawn equitably to deal with that problem. Educational attainment. We have some of the lowest educational attainment in the state, if not in the country, and we all desperately want that to change. How can we do that? By making sure that we have equitable maps so that all of us can be working together to make sure that people are well-educated in this county. Hard-to-count indices. You can see immediately where the lines are already drawing themselves practically. And you can see the black lines of the Equitable Map Coalition Plan superimposed upon income inequality. It is the case that research demonstrates that when income goes down, so does civic participation. So we really need to be mindful of that balance of votership within a district so that folks who are low-income can be empowered by an election process and select candidates of choice. We also had the benefit, I'm sorry, sir, did you need something?
I believe Supervisor Couch had a question.
Ask the chairman if I could ask you a question. So yes, I do have, need something. Could you go back to the slide? You've used this phrase a couple of times, and it was the slide where you talked about housing. Can you go back to that one?
Absolutely.
And the phrase was, and I just want to make sure I understand it right, you can see immediately, and then something comes after that. What is that?
Yes, sir, you can see immediately that the darker colors on this map, similar to the other heat maps, identify areas in our county where people are experiencing the highest housing cost burden, which basically means that of the income they take home every year or every month, then the cost of their housing, what percentage of that take-home is.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the way the lines are drawn currently? I thought you were saying you can see immediately that the way the lines are drawn currently impacts housing prices.
No, what I'm saying is that the way the lines on the heat map identify the areas with the highest housing cost burden are ways in which we can consider how to, how we should be drawing the lines so that it empowers folks that are currently dealing with some of the heaviest burdens.
Hmm, okay.
And basically, what I'm highlighting here is the fact that when we were meeting in our weekly meetings and engaging in a peer-learning process, we pulled up and shared with one another all sorts of sources of information like this that were very, very helpful for us to look at the map and say, well, how should we be drawing the lines if in fact effective representation is going to help us put our best foot forward for the future? So that was the thinking behind why we look at all these equity indicators. We also benefited from some local research related to just very, very meticulous documentation and historical analysis of property documents where unfortunately in our past, and although certainly laws now prohibit these kinds of practices, but it is the case that like all areas in the United States, we have neighborhoods that have been impacted to the present day by a history of racially restrictive covenants and other property documents that require that people be of a certain race or ethnicity to be able to live in the area. And you can see that it tracks pretty closely where a lot of our equity indicators are identifying areas that are underserved. When we are talking about effectiveness, in addition to the equity pieces, there has been a lot of conversation about what we did in the past because we had to redistrict in the middle of the 10-year cycle versus what we have to do now that we're in the traditional redistricting cycle. And I wanted to point out that in 2017, when within the context of a legal dispute, the settlement map that we are living with right now was based on 2010 census data and that the 2020 census data shows population increases in Kern County of approximately 53,000 people, and that for the first time ever, the constitutionally protected class group of Latinos are 54% of the population. So in other words, they're a majority of the population. It's very, very important to remember that in addition to the 2020 census data being the data set that we are required to use in this process, that also subsequent to the lawsuit, the California Fair Maps Act was passed. It supersedes all of that prior analysis because of the way in which we, that is the law that you are required to follow now. So when we have conversations about what was required then and what worked then, we have to be really, really, really careful to recognize that the Fair Maps Act is a whole other ballgame. And in particular, this 65% CVAP threshold, at the time, when we were using old data, 2010 census data, which by the way, ACS data was available and could have been used to get a more accurate estimate of the population of Kern County, but it wasn't. And so in, because of that old data not being nearly as accurate as the data set could have been, the 65% CVAP threshold was used to help achieve a more accurate actual population. So it is probably not going to be very helpful in this quest to draw effective VRA districts to use that as a threshold. It is probably going to lead to packing. And indeed, this is a really important example. This is a voter turnout heat map. The darker the color shaded in the census tract, the higher the percentage of voter turnout, which also tends to track with higher populations of eligible voters in the first place. That huge census tract, 32.04, why is there no data for that? Well, it's because the population has increased there so substantially that the Census Bureau has since chopped it into smaller pieces and smaller groups of population. And so because the heat map is generally based on another voter turnout data set and there's newer data available, it can't, it has a different geography associated with it. But we all know, and especially from looking at the county's general plan, that that area of southwest Bakersfield, where the new sports complex is located, the area of the Ming Corridor, and the area of the Stockdale Corridor, these are all really beautiful neighborhoods, very high-end, you know, construction out there, high-end park facilities and things of that nature. And then the census tract to the north, that's the rectangle, that's Rosedale. And we also know that that is another area of super-high population increases of, again, additional folks that are pretty affluent. So when we're talking about balance, we really need to be mindful that the current map does not account for the population increases in that area that were known at the time. If you do wish to get the analysis of the original voter file to fill in those gaps, we can provide that analysis for you. Just ask for it. Okay, we will get that for you. When Bakersfield voter turnout in the affluent areas hovers in the 80% and 90%, it really is important to look at where other folks are at. 25%, 38% in parts of the more densely populated areas when you head closer into the city of Bakersfield, you have maybe get into the 40s or the 50s with the exception of census tract 12.02, which is near Owens Street and MLK area. And what I'm pointing out here is that when we're looking at the current districts 4 and 3, who is essentially selecting the supervisor in those districts under the current lines? It's not Lamont, Weed Patch, Arvin, Wasco, or Delano. It's these folks in census tract 32.04.
Ms. Pesante?
Yes, sir.
It's actually been over 15 minutes so far for this presentation, so could you bring your comments to a close, please?
I sure can, and certainly if you have additional questions, I hope that that will be accommodated. Balance is really important. Go ahead, sir.
Supervisor Couch.
Actually, I need to clear that through that guy over there.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do you have the voter turnout data for those precincts that you're talking about? For example, Lamont, Arvin, Weed Patch, and then southwest Bakersfield?
We can, we can get those, yes, sir.
But you, I assume that you reviewed that to come up with this map, to come up with this heat map. That's what it has to be.
Yes, this heat map is through Healthy Cities of Advancement Project, and it contains all of this information here. But what I'm saying is that because this is data that is not from the original voter file, but it's from the ACS survey, that we can, if you would like, get the gap data, but we'd have to go back to the original voter file to get it.
No, I'm just talking in simple terms. You're talking about voter turnout, and you're showing us some percentages that are awfully high, and then some that are low. And so are you saying that's from the most recent election? Was it the recall? Was it the most recent general? Which election are you referring to?
The 2020 general election. So that's why they all look pretty high, but they're all comparing apples to apples because...
I just need to know which one they're, the most recent general.
Yes. So, so this is from the most recent 2020 general election, and this is from the most recent 2020 general election.
But that data is embedded in this other study or website or?
Yes, because it is from, and in fact, our demographer who ran an analysis and can provide the additional analysis that we are offering, he can speak to some of the details of the data sets, whereas I am reliant upon, upon these heat maps here. So what we see in the current map, and then of course, Plan A and Plan A2, which really are just slight modifications of the current plan...
Ms. Pesante?
Yes, sir.
How much more time do you need? It's already been, we're coming up on, it's already been over, quite a bit over 15 minutes, so.
Yes, and I've been accommodating questions, so I appreciate your patience.
And I accounted for that, and most of the questions came after that 15-minute mark.
I have maybe two or three more slides, and that's it.
Okay, could you please, excuse me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please be brief with those?
I can, absolutely. So what we see here in the current plan and the Plan A and Plan A2 is a continuation of affluent communities outvoting constitutionally protected class communities. And indeed, the current plan also splits the Black community three ways without, and allows them to be diluted in their voting opportunities. Finally, to wrap things up, the Equitable Map Coalition Plan equitably realigns political power across current supervisory districts, whereas the other plans do not. Plan A, as I've said, is a status quo plan that doesn't go far enough. The second plan overpopulates District 5 by about 6,000 people, I believe, and the third plan is probably a violation of that, you know, putting affluent communities with rural farmworker communities and perpetually outvoting them for the next 10 years. So we respectfully ask this board to very seriously consider the effectiveness standards that we've outlined tonight, and we, and we hope that you will also apply the partisan blind orientation that we have adopted and adopt the Equitable Coalition, Equitable Map Coalition Plan, because it's, it's the plan that is going to be the foundation of our future here in Kern County. Thank you for your, this opportunity to speak to you about this.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Excuse me, excuse me, everybody, this is not the time for cheering, booing, any of that. We're just here to have a conversation. Are there any questions from the board right now?
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, before we begin public presentation, I would like to note that many letters have been received by the board in support of different proposed maps, and these letters have all been provided to the board members prior to this meeting. So with that, we will go to public comment. Now would be the time for members of the public to come and address the board. Please state, spell your name, and you'll have two minutes.
Is it possible?
Excuse me, ma'am, this is public presentation time. If you'd like to speak, you can come down to the podium and give your name, and you'll have two minutes.
Everybody's looking at me to go first. I guess I'll break the ice.
How many minutes?
Two minutes.
Thank you, Chair.
Board, staff, Jeff Heinle, retired. Good to see everybody. I know that the last time I came to speak to you was on redistricting about three years ago. So here I am today, and I've got to be honest, I have some concerns. It's, it's like Groundhog Day, where, where we look at plans like this, have partners, have Dolores Huerta Foundation come and, and, and look at you and talk, and then sadly, we go behind closed doors, and we don't listen to anybody, and we come up with plans that put taxpayers that, you know, have to pay for core costs. Or we go behind closed doors and we change everything around, ignoring this kind of stuff, ignoring public comment for our own benefit, which is tragic. It's like shenanigans. So Chair, you're exempt from this, from what I'm saying. I hope that things will be different this time around. I see I have 30 more seconds, and I've already ended my statement, so.
Let me walk with that.
I'd just like to caution all of you. This all looks the same. Looks like the same MO. I don't want to see people going behind closed doors, last minute, changing the rules to benefit themselves. Let's keep integrity in the process. Let's listen to what everybody out here has to say with an open heart, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Heinle, would you please spell your last name so I get it correct for the record?
H-E-I-N-L-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question of our counsel. These are comments that are being put on the record, and there's always the implication of a lawsuit. And so my question is simply this. Mr. Heinle just said that we go, we hear this public testimony, and then we go behind closed doors and talk about these maps, and we don't, we haven't done that. So do we need to put on the record that we have not done that, or is it just assumed, because, is it assumed as fact that if someone makes a statement and some testimony and we don't refute it, that that's the truth? Because I don't want us to get in a position like that again. I'm looking to you for some advice on that.
Supervisor Couch, through the chair, it would be appropriate to remind the speakers that the, the last time that your board addressed redistricting was out of the cycle of 2010, and it was due to a lawsuit, and that as a result of that lawsuit and directions and orders given by the federal judge, there were, it was a lawsuit, which permits the board to meet in closed session to discuss it, and I believe the board was directed to negotiate with the plaintiffs in that case and decide whether to approve a proposed settlement or to take other action. And so all of that in relation to the redistricting that your board accomplished in 2017 and 2018 was directed by a federal lawsuit, unlike the proceedings and the process that you are using this time, which are all being closely, all of that, your process is being closely kept in line, absolutely in lockstep with the laws and the regulations that pertain to redistricting. So it is a different, this time, it's, it is a different process that you are, you are using. This time, it is a different process that you are using. And there have not been... I mean, anybody could look at the board's agenda for things in closed session, and this has not been in closed session. This is... You are following the process of public hearings and public workshops and community engagement. And for instance, tonight's board meeting is yet another transparent, open meeting for your board to receive public testimony and then discuss and consider what you want to do in drawing supervisory lines.
No, sir. It's time for our next speaker right now. Thank you.
Well, Chair, you do need to know that...
Okay, sir. I'm sorry. I appreciate that. Please feel free to reach out to my office. But this is time for the next speaker. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to address the board.
Shenanigans.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Leilani Tedeschi. I had prepared a different speech. However, after listening to the 20-plus minutes, I need to refute the data that she presented with regards to voter registration and the allocation of who voted, who did not. I spent eight or nine weeks observing the recall election in September. What I saw were over 16,000 ballots, mail-in ballots, returned to the county as undeliverable, which implies that the voter roll data that they are using for this analysis is inaccurate. The voter roll needs to be cleaned up before any documentation or assumptions can be made on who is voting and who is not voting. In addition to the 16,000 ballots that were returned this past September, the same amount, plus or minus a few, were also returned in November 2020, which indicates that the voter roll was not cleaned up. Okay, so that needs to be addressed before anything can be determined as to who's voting, who is not, because that's not a proper reflection of who's voting. And I need the board to commit to that. Okay? They're using faulty data. 38 seconds. "Redistricting is based on U.S. Census data to ensure that each board represents approximately the same number of constituents. The districts and boundaries were drawn, agreed upon, three years ago. They could have utilized that data or mandated it. It was available, and during the negotiations, they should have taken that opportunity. Boundaries shouldn't be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party." Her presentation stated that it needs to be done by political party. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, everybody. I'm asking that you please respect the decorum of this room. We are here to listen to speakers and have them share their thoughts with the board, not cheering, booing anybody. We want to just hear what people have to say. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Neil Sanapa. I'm a resident of District 3. My last name is spelled S-A-N-N-A-P-B-A, for the record. I am in support of the Kern Equitable Coalition maps. I believe those are the ones that should be adopted. I'm urging y'all to adopt that, because in the past, voters have been disenfranchised by what this board does. To refute the last speaker and what they said, I didn't hear anything about political party being mentioned in the presentation that was given, because it wasn't. This is about having communities that are similar to each other being able to elect folks. And if we have 54% of folks in Kern County that are Latino, then we should have them be able to decide who represents them. And in the past, you've drawn maps that don't allow that to happen, that disenfranchise those voters. And in the past, political ambitions of folks have gotten the way of being equitable, of being fair. I think we all know, when we're children, right? Our parents, our teachers, they tell us one of the most important things to be is fair. And it's hard for me to see this happen over and over again. Where folks up, sitting where y'all are at, you guys get paid a pretty hefty sum for the work y'all do. And I'm just asking y'all, just be fair. Be fair. These folks have already drawn maps for you that are fair, that aren't going to get my tax dollars and everybody else's tax dollars in trouble going to lawsuits. Just be fair. Right? Just be fair. A lot of y'all are going to retire soon anyway, so, I mean, just draw some fair maps. Right? Just draw some fair maps. Let us be represented adequately. That's all I ask from y'all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening. My name is Reyna Jacovol, and I live in Kern County District 2. I'm here today as a resident of Bakersfield and member, representative for over 6,000 home care workers that choose to live and work here in Kern County. Here in support of Equity Coalition map being proposed, we believe this map will improve the quality of life for all residents of Kern County and create representation that engages all its communities. The Equity Coalition map is based on 2020 census data and reflects the significant increase in population of Kern County's communities of color. The Equity Coalition map includes three Latino-majorities districts to reflect Kern County's current demographics. Keeping communities of interest, whole and districting process is one of several required districting criteria in California. Lastly, I support the Equity Coalition map because it is based on equity indicators like population burden, COVID impact, and socioeconomic factors, and Kern's history of land use discrimination, as well as it protects our taxpayers' monies by being in full and clear compliance with California Fair Maps Act of 2019 and the Voting Rights Act, which reduces the risk of expensive litigation. Thank you to the County of Kern for hosting this public hearing. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hello. Lisa Chekley Sanchez from Second District. I'm here tonight as a community member only. So let me make that very loud and clear for everyone. I want to let you folks know, the board, I respect you tremendously. I want you to know, do not be afraid of a lawsuit. Please. Everybody who is speaking is referring back to the lawsuit. And to me, that seems a little bit of like bullying personally. So I'm here to let you know that, me personally, Lisa Chekley personally, I am for Map A2 because my district, we're at the very bottom. If we add District 2 with District 1, makes us one big district, and our funds goes down because we all only get an equal portion of that pie. That means my roads are going to be worse than they already are. That means my parks are going to be worse than they already are. That means that everybody that lives in that area is going to not get equality. So that's all I had to say tonight, but don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Noel Button. Yeah, yeah. I have a couple of questions, and maybe you guys can answer them. I think we should define constitutionally-protected people, because she kept on naming minorities. But Phillip and Zach, I feel like you guys are just as constitutionally-protected as I am. And for people who sat there and you guys made an oath on the Constitution, I'm figuring you guys know what the Constitution is about, and there is no one particularly protected constitutional class.
There are. They're absolutely defined.
They're defined...
Excuse me.
Through decades and decades of...
Okay. Continue, please.
You can protect class and gender, but there's no, like, specific... The Constitution only protects Black people, only protects Hispanics, only protects that. It protects my white daughter just as much as it protects me. That's what I'm saying.
Well, you said it.
Well, there you go. So I think we should elaborate on that. I don't think we should sit there and say that only a certain class or a certain race is protected by the Constitution. I think that should be really defined, and I think that should be elaborated on. But that's it.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Megan Russell. It's R-U-S-S-E-L-L. I'm an organizer here in Kern County. I have been for several years. So I've seen how inequitable the current maps are. And with your... No offense, but with your history of known gerrymandering, I think that it'd be in your best interest to accept the maps that have been graciously provided for you by the Kern Equitable Maps Coalition. They're in accordance with the Fair Maps Act. And I feel that enough taxpayer money has already been spent because of the last lawsuit, when you refused to follow the law and instead prioritized your own political gain. So I would ask that you learn from your previous mistake and hopefully have the best interest of your constituents at heart. And please, 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 accept the Kern Equitable map. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hello. My name is Margie Bell. I'm a retired teacher, and I have a certain amount of expertise in civic education. And I'm glad to see a good turnout tonight, no matter what the viewpoint being expressed. It's really important that communities get involved. I support the Equitable Maps Coalition plan for redistricting. Simply put, their plan recognizes the importance of activating all members of our community in the democratic processes of decision-making. Kern County is, as you know, overwhelmingly constituted of well over 50% ethnic minorities, yet the old supervisory districts are drawn specifically to disadvantage minority voters. The old Kern districts also disadvantaged people living in poverty. And there are many people who are not minorities who live in Kern County in poverty. This is neither fair nor productive, and it is not legal. Many studies over the years show us that when people are civically engaged, they become part of the solution to problems. When people feel disrespected and cut out of decision-making processes, they tend to disengage. We need an upsurge in voter involvement to solve economic and social problems. And believe me, I know they are huge here, in both the city and the county, and they will be huge in the future. This is why I favor civic engagement for all and voter equity regulations. Diversity and inclusion are powerful assets in our community, and we need to take advantage of these assets. We also hope that you will include the Kern River Corridor in the old District 3 plan. I am a part of District 3. It would be helpful to solve the problems of the river locally. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Taylor. Last name T-A-Y-L-O-R. I speak tonight firmly... Before I begin my comments, I am requesting District 5 Supervisor Ms. Perez to apologize for the foul language I just heard. When the public was asked to not applaud or clap, I respectfully request that you not refer to another district supervisor as a POS.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Accepted. I will keep going. Thank you. I don't need to be bossed. I am here to state that I am firmly opposed to the current equity proposed map to be drawn for the following reasons. I moved to a new house three years ago. I lived in Far West Rosedale. Mr. Couch was my supervisor. Unbeknownst to me, I moved to Shafter, and surprisingly, Mr. Couch was my supervisor, because the lines had just been changed and drawn. We are asking for lines to be drawn again? It's a merry-go-round. I request respectfully for us to maintain the order we have. First of all, district lines should not be gerrymandered. They should be based on geographic needs, as well as park needs. My roads that were broken had potholes in the west, now have potholes in Shafter. It shouldn't make any difference. I firmly request that you look at human beings based on being citizens, voting citizens, residents of Kern County, not on the color of their skin. I don't quite understand how the needs are that different. We all need good hospitals. We all need good roads. We all need good parks. We all need to be together. We don't need to be divided. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Nadine Escalante. Oh, let me take this off. Nadine Escalante. I wanted to start this off as saying, first off, I've never come to a meeting where I've actually written out what I was going to say. I usually always just speak it from my heart. Supervisor Perez, you are not a part of this conversation when I say this. All last year, when I brought parks, illegal dumping, issues in District 5 to your attention, you immediately took care of them. I do not see this in Mr. Couch's district, and I'm so sorry, Mr. Couch. I have seen firsthand, in Arvin, during the election, only one day of the county being out there to collect ballots, the people of Arvin had to find transportation to get their ballots to Bakersfield. I know firsthand, because I've talked to various community members. You are more than welcome to reach out to me, and I will have a conversation with you, sir. I have seen what goes on out in Rosemond, in Mahavi, in Richcrest, because that was where I was born, in this county. My family lives out there. Mr. Scribner, you only visit your area before your time to be elected. The people that live in that area, my family members, have pointed out the parks have no water for the children. There is no place for the senior citizens to go in this terrible heat that Kern County is freaking terribly under. The sins of your fathers is the reason why we continue to live the way that we live. The equitable map represents all of Kern County. All of us want to make this county better, to make it thrive. And you guys are intentionally destructing this county that you are temporarily serving to only feed your bank accounts. We are sick and tired of it. And by the way, in my neighborhood, I have potholes. But I have already notified Ms. Perez's office, and she'll take care of it. And I don't live in Rosehill. I live on the east side, and I'm proud of where I live. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, Chairman Peters, Board Supervisors. My name is Imelda Seja Butkoitz. It's spelled I-M-E-L-D-A. Last name is C-E-J-A hyphenated Butkoitz. B as in Bo, U as in Tom, K-I-E-W-I-C-Z. I live in District 1. I am a member of the Equitable Map Coalition, and I contribute to the Equality Coalition map plan. I support the Equity Coalition map because it actually reflects all Kern County populations. It keeps really equal population in each district. I've worked at Public Health for the past 21 years. I've had the opportunity to work with many community partners throughout Kern County. I've seen firsthand that not all communities share the same interests. I live in the southwest area, in the Oaks. I could say that I have things in common with my neighbors in Seven Oaks and Haguenos, but not with Delano or Richcrest. It's unfortunate, but not all communities are created equal. Kern County's 8,000 square miles makes access to quality healthcare difficult. Access to healthcare is vital to everyone's health. Rural and remote Kern County communities have far too many unmet basic needs. Resources, access to basic healthcare facilities, enrolled residents face chronic shortages of doctors, nurses, pharmacists, and non-physician providers. Unfortunately, many patients must travel outside the county to seek specialized care, or providers may only provide local services a few days a week. It is imperative that you keep the rural mountains and desert areas with shared interests together in the same district. Please support the map created by the community with our most underserved in mind and approve the Equity Coalition map plan today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair, Board. My name is Sandy Redding, S-A-N-D-Y-R-E-D-I-N-G. And I'm a frontline community nurse of 38 years, vice president of the Kern Inyoano County Central Labor Council, and I live in District 1. I support the Equity Coalition maps. Redistricting is really important, and we need leadership that gives the process the attention and seriousness that it deserves. The community understands that dozens of speakers came forward during the four months that the commission provided opportunity for public comment. They overwhelmingly demanded fair maps that... for public comment. They overwhelmingly demanded fair maps that prioritized underserved communities and equity. It's not equitable for affluent communities with over 90% voter turnout rates to be able to outvote underserved communities in District Three and Four with turnout rates in the 20s and 30s. Map options that are community and equity data-driven should be given greater weight than consultancy, partisan, and status quo maps. Speaking from my experience as a nurse, I see firsthand what inequity looks like every day in my job. COVID has exacerbated this inequity. For example, even the rollout of the vaccinations. You know, we even took it into our own hands to secure through the Labor Council from the governor, 1,000 vaccines, and partnered with a community college to give the vaccines on the east side of town. We believe that the map should accurately represent those that are being served. I support the Equity Coalition Map. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hortensia Cabral. I live in District Two, and that's in the southwest area of Bakersfield. I'm here today to tell you that I am a member of the Equitable Map Coalition, and I participated in helping make the Equity Coalition Map. I want to let you know that a lot of time was spent learning about how to draw effective VRA maps, and we spent a lot of time learning about the California Fair Maps Act. Based on what we learned, I can convey that our group committed to certain standards in, in doing this map. And just to give you an example, our group committed to using absolutely no partisan data to create the map. That means that our group did not use the addresses of elected officials or even considered them when drawing the Equity Coalition Map because the California Fair Maps Act prohibits us from actually considering, and we believe that incumbent residents, resident addresses are partisan, part of partisan data. I ask this board to hold themselves accountable to the same rigorous standards that we applied to ourselves when we were drawing these equitable coalition maps. I want to point out as well that District Three currently has a 45 Latino population, a 45% Latino population, and this population, when this population reaches 50%, you guys might be obligated to draw a VRA map. Our map already takes that into consideration. We've already anticipated for that possibility. So rather than having to redraw a map, we've already done it for you. We've already taken that into consideration. I want to ask you to do me a favor and do this entire community a favor and adopt our map. We've already done the work.
Ma'am, your comment, time is already 20 seconds.
I have, I'm not done.
Your 20 seconds over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Could we have our next speaker, please? Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Greg Ardois, A-R-D-O-I-N, and I have some things to say, but I just want to take a moment. I have devoted my life to education. It's what I love. It's what I wake up in the morning to do, and if I were a teacher teaching you folks as my student, I would shoot myself for that horrible lesson I made because y'all are lacking on engagement, especially over on this side. Good to see those eyes, Zach, first time. So, but I am in District Three, so I am a lot of Mr. Maggard. I am a member of this Equitable Maps Coalition, which I've learnt lots, so much. My friend Hortensia just said she learned so much, and as a teacher, my heart was so warmed. We did a lot of research together and spent the time learning about all kinds of things. And like I said, I've spent 16 years in the Kern County Superintendent of Schools, working all over this county. Every one of your districts I worked with students in, and parents and families, and I love this county. But most importantly, I love the education and opportunities that we can provide all those youth. But especially the mountain and rural communities have lacked so bad in their internet connectivity consistency. The last 18 months of teaching have been just a huge spotlight on all these disparities between those groups. It's, it's been difficult for educators and students that have reliable internet access, but those folks that are in those outlying areas have seen a much more difficult time, and this, nothing's been done about this. The problem is that when we look at the, the technology that's needed to compete in our economy that's coming out, I've had students in Bodfish and Wofford Heights that I've been teaching algebra to or career exploration that I'm teaching to in Buttonwillow or Wasco or even just the outskirts of Delano, and students lose engagement, just like you folks, but this is because their internet goes down, or they just can't even get into the lesson at all. I have friends in Taft, California City, and Mojave. They're banging their heads against those dry deserts because their students can't connect. So this board has not taken the time to apply for the grants necessary to rectify these issues, and I urge you to look past your political careers and choose the equitable coalition's map.
Thank you. Another reminder, two minutes is our time limit, so please try and be mindful of that. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes, caballeros y damas. Hi, everybody. I'm Mary Helen Barrow. I'm 83 years young this year, and I've lived in Kern County over 40 years. Hi, David. Hi, Letty. Zach, Mike, my supervisor, and the newbie on the board. I know, Mr. Peters, you get really impatient with people, but you know what? We've been putting up with this you-know-what for years, okay? This old Mexican woman, actually, I'm Mexican on my mom's side, Cuban on my dad's side. I'm also credentialed teacher, and I know that a couple of people here expressed real concern about people being considered as constitutionally protected because of their race. Well, guess what, folks? People have been unconstitutionally treated in this county and throughout the nation for years because of the color of their skin. That's why we had to have laws instituted regrettably to protect people of color and seniors, too. So, you know, I've been up here talking to most of you for so long, and I really would like you to really stop playing safe with your own seat and look at the community that actually lives here now. Draw fair districts that represent everybody, not just certain people, okay? And I'm looking, so far, I haven't really had a chance to look at all of the maps. I recently had surgery on my shoulder, but the Equitable Maps Coalition map looks pretty good to me. I'm gonna keep studying it. Zach, thank you for sending me your emails. I appreciate it. They've been very helpful, and, and I'm gonna keep working on it, but whatever you do, don't do the status quo. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, Board. My name is Lydia Chaney. I live in Tehachapi. I'm a business owner and a resident. First of all, I'm an American citizen. I'm Mexican. I'm black. I'm French, and I'm white. And I am sick and tired of foundations like Dolores Suerta saying that I'm a victim. I am not a victim. When I moved to Tehachapi, I didn't look up the color of my supervisor, and that's Zach Scrivner, and he's one hell of a supervisor. You want to coordinate, or East Kern into one district, nobody's gonna get any attention. We've got two Army facilities in East Kern, and they both deserve attention with the supervisor. When I was making $10,000 a year and when I was making $100,000 a year, I always had the right to vote. So don't say if you live in a poor district, you can't get off your ass and go vote. It's a right. And when you're 18, my parents encouraged me to register. I register, and I wear that badge of honor to vote every election I can. So please, people, it's not a matter of color of skin. It's a matter of community working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, this is probably the fifth, sixth time. Can we just be respectful and let people talk, please? We're trying to be fair and equal for everybody that's speaking and make sure that everybody gets heard. We have our next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Carol Nelson. I've watched several of the redistricting meetings online by livestream, and I appreciate all the time the community has spent and the supervisors and the counties being committed to make sure that we're all a part of this process. Thank you very much. I live in Supervisory District Number Four within the city of Bakersfield, and to be honest, I really have never had to reach out to my Kern, my Kern County supervisor. He's doing a good job, and my needs from government are mostly provided by the city. A few years ago, my husband and I bought a fixer-upper in the community of Lake Isabella, and we hoped to eventually retire to the Kern River Valley. Spending time in the KRV has shown me that there's a stark contrast for the needs of county services between people who live in an area with an established city government structure and those who do not. For example, I really don't follow the meeting schedule of my supervisor, but if I see that the District One supervisor is gonna be attending a Lake Isabella and Bodfish Property Association meeting, I'll try to attend, to be there in person, or to see if somebody posts the meeting online. For every basic service, from public safety to the hours the Kern River Valley Transfer Station is open, the county is a primary source for meeting the government's needs of the people in that area. There is no city-county overlap. I strongly urge the rejection of any map that combines the current Supervisory One and Two districts into one massive district. County services and representation are arguably more important in these areas than they are in areas of the county, which also have a city government in place. The people of District One may seem hardy and independent, but they do deserve better than to be represented by one supervisor who has to cover the largest landmass over the most challenging, some call them dangerous, roads in the county. Please don't combine Districts One and District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Buenas tardes a todos y cada uno de ustedes. Señora Leticia, buenas tardes. Gusto verla otra vez. Mi nombre es Marta Elba Trujillo, y yo vivo en el condado de Kern. Estoy aquí hoy como residente.
Esperate un momento, por favor. Esperate.
Okay.
Marta Elba Trujillo.
Me acabo de dar mi pluma. Que avable despacito y entocé.
Okay.
Buenas tardes a todos ustedes y a cada uno.
Good afternoon to each and, each and single, single one of you.
Mi nombre es Marta Elba Trujillo, y vivo-
My name is Marta Elba Trujillo, and I live-
En el condado de Kern.
In Kern County.
Estoy aquí hoy como residente de Bakersfield.
I'm here today as a resident of Bakersfield.
Y miembro de la Unión de Trabajadores de Atención Doméstica.
And a member of the Domestic Workers Association.
Estoy aquí para apoyar la propuesta de los mapas producidos por la coalición de mapas equitativos.
I'm here to support the maps made by the Equitable Coalition, Map Coalition.
Creemos que estos mapas mejorarán la calidad de vida, de vida para, de todos los residentes del condado de Kern.
Okay, we believe that these maps will better the quality of life for all the residents of Kern County.
Y creará una representación de, que involucre a todos sus, a todas las comunidades.
And will create a representation that will involve all of the communities.
Les pedimos a la junta directiva de supervisores que adopte estos mapas y mantenga el status quo, y no mantenga el status quo.
We request from the Board of Supervisors to approve these maps and not to maintain the status quo.
Esta coalición ha creado un mapa impulsado por la comunidad que cree, reconoce y se basa en las comunidades, en las comunidades de intereses en todo el condado.
This coalition has been, created a map that was made by the community input, and it recognizes and is based on the interest of the entire community and the county.
Just one thing. Yes, please, just don't forget, you guys are in the chairs because we voted for you guys, so we put you guys in the place that you guys are. Just keep our words on your mind. Please, help us to make our, you know, Kern County better. Please. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Vivian Anfoso, A-N-F-O-S-O, and I live in Kern County. I've been born and raised here. I got my degree here. So attending these civic meetings is very eye-opening. You tend to live as a young person, maybe in your own little secluded world, but you come to these meetings and you realize there's a lot more out there than what you thought. So I'm here today as a Bakersfield representative, like I said, a resident. I, I'm a daughter here. My parents are from, of course, Mexico, and then so are my grandparents. So this community is what saw me grow up, and as a member of the Home Care Workers Union, or UDW, or the United Domestic Workers. And just to reiterate what a few other people have said, I'm here to support the proposed maps produced by the Equity Map Coalition. We believe these maps will improve the quality of life for all Kern County residents and create representation that involves all their communities. As a young person growing up, you can see there's no shame in admitting that some of us go trick-or-treating on the east side, but if you want the good candy, you go to the other side. So everybody knows where that is. So like we all have been giving our comments, we asked that the Board of Supervisors to adopt these maps and not maintain the status quo. I'm 23, and I want to see this community thrive, and I think equality is a step in the right direction. So let's remedy the situation by selecting a strong map. And once again, to reiterate, I support the Equity Coalition Map. And just to give a closing remark that the future is out there, and we don't all live forever, but the future is out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, everyone. I'm Paul Linfesti. I'm in District Three. I came tonight to support the Equitable Map Coalition. I wasn't originally going to get up and speak, but we heard the word tonight, packing and fracking, a term that had been used over and over again to be a new way of trying to continue our old discriminatory ways. I'm not saying that that is what's behind the decisions of the maps that are being looked at, but unfortunately, these have become new terms for old discriminatory things from the past. I was not in favor of how the maldef decision was affecting, when it was supposed to take effect, two, two years into some people's terms. I thought that was a little unfair, but I also think it's unfair for why the maldef decision had to come forth in the first place, because it was, it was another part where we, we in Kern County have been seen as being politically backwards for years now. And the fact is, regardless of what the courts rule or not, the fact is, the basic truth as I see it is that the courts are correct in having to make that decision. It's too bad that they had to, but, but the fact is, they did it. And it's time for us to join the rest of the state in the 21st century and coming across. I apologize. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, so I'm just talking off the cuff. Okay, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
My name is Clint Davies. I live in Rosemont, so that's District Two. I just want to address some of the folks just real quick, just say, I, I support your cause. I believe in everything you're doing and all the studies you're doing. You've done a lot more homework than, than I have. I've submitted my own map. It's kind of interesting. It looks like a trivia pursuit pie. I kind of made all the, the districts equal, and I, I, I'm just gonna be honest, I feel like your map doesn't pass the eyeball test for me. I don't, like I said, I'm not an expert. I'm not condemning it or anything like that, but I'm also not a big fan of the other maps that the city, the county has either. But I will say, living in District Two, it's a huge area, and one that's proposed is gonna be almost 6,000 square miles. That would be bigger than Hawaii, Connecticut, Delaware, Rhode Island, or something like that. So I think it's something very important to consider because our, our elected representatives, they serve as delegates that vote for us. they serve as delegates that vote for us when it comes to, you know, whether in Congress or City Council and things like that, but they also do constituent service. And if you have such a huge area, you're going to disenfranchise people from getting services and some of the same people that you're trying to protect and empower. So, I think maybe we find a middle ground here, but I think that the size of what's proposed for District Two is kind of, it's just, it's not practical from a physical standpoint. I think there's maybe other possibilities we could figure out to make sure that people get services better. One other last point I had was, is that I'm out of points. So, I'm going to go ahead and just cut it short, and thank you, and thank you for writing that op-ed, inspiring me to come, Mr. Scrivener, and give you guys, well, they can't give each other an applause, can they? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, good evening to everybody from the doorway in to the doorway out. Ms. Perez, I'm not in your district, but I see you. I see you out there. I respect you. So, before I go further, I would first like to acknowledge the indigenous peoples of this land, the Kwaiisoo folks.
Ma'am, could you please state your name for the record?
I apologize, yes, my name is Maria Romero, R-O-M-E-R-O.
Thank you.
So, where I live, I want to recognize the Kwaiisoo Nation and here the Yocut Nation. So, as I said, my name is Maria Romero. I am a resident of Keene. I'm also a member of the Kern County Equitable Map Coalition. Keene is a small community off the 58 near the Chavez National Monument. We have water problems, and we have poor nonexistent internet access, among other issues common in the rural mountain and high desert communities in Kern. I strongly support unifying the mountains and the high desert rural communities as one community of interest to be kept whole in one district. Not once have either Mr. Scrivener nor Mr. Peters acknowledged in their redistricting comments the kinds of problems permanent residents of mountain communities like mine face on a daily basis. They seem far more concerned with whatever talking points their attorneys and Big Eastern Economic Interests write for them. The bottom line is that Plan A, just like our current map, renders northeast Kern communities like the Kern River Valley beholden to Rosedale and affluent neighborhoods in west Bakersfield. And south and southwestern Kern mountain communities like Frazier Park and my community of Keene beholden to densely populated areas of southwest Bakersfield. This is not okay. I support the Equity Coalition map because it gives under-deserved mountain communities like mine the chance to direct our own destiny for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Jesus Garcia, resident of Bakersfield for 26 years, 25 years of those, 22 years of those have been in District Three. I love the east side. Go Blades, even though I'm not a Blade. My dad, however, was here 70 years ago. He was working out in the fields of Arvin and DeGiorgio, and over the years, he would tell us, try to tell us stories. And, you know, I was going to college, so what, I needed to listen to my dad? He was just a farm worker. What did he know, right? So, one day, we were back in our home in Mexico, and I went out with my dad and a couple of his friends, and they, and what seemed like for an hour, they just sat around and talked about the weather, that we were in a drought. And they're like, well, you know, there's a drought, means the cows aren't going to be fed, means the corn's not going to be there, means, you know, we're going to have to do something. What we're in right here is a drought. And those gentlemen were thinking about the future. They were thinking about the situation as it was, how could it be resolved? Every day I go, when I would drive my daughters down to, down to LA, we would pass by the beautiful fields. One day, there's corn, another day, there's sorghum, another day, there's wheat. What I'm saying is, the soil needs to replenish itself. We needed to have a new crop, a new fresh crop. And by a new crop, doesn't mean you plant a thing of corn one day and then you plant another corn the next day. You need to transplant those crops, mix them up. What we see here, however, on the board, is not that change. We see a stagnant board that hasn't changed in quite a while. And so, we need, what happens if you, if the soil of the farmers doesn't get paid? Does it get, we have an ecological, you know, explosion. So, and by changing, I don't mean just change it with your new underneath. So, Christian, I'm sorry, this next seat is not yours? It belongs to the people. And so, that's what I'm trying to say here. We need change. The soil needs to replenish itself. Everybody here needs to clean up and go forward. So, Equitable Coalition, oh, by the way, Statistical Directive 15 is the reason we are here. Look it up, Office of Management and Budget. It's why we're here. Statistical Directive 15, Office of Management and Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good evening. I'm Camila Chavez. I'm the Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, and I live in the mountain community of Keene. Extensive community of interest input needs to be reflected in the plan that gets adopted by this board. The board's consultant has catalogued substantial communities of interest mentioned via public comments for months now. Permanent residents of mountain and high desert communities have asked to be kept whole. Rural farmworker communities west of Highway 99 have asked to be kept together, and rural farmworker communities east of 99 have asked to be kept with east Bakersfield so that they can be in a compact district with communities facing the same issues. Historically, black communities in Bakersfield's urban core have asked to be kept together with communities in similar interests. So, significant community of interests have been repeatedly uplifted by community coalitions, community groups, and residents during these months of public comment. I urge you to review these public comments provided during the input sessions and take a serious look at the map that reflects this feedback the most. The equity plan developed by the community and with clear community support should be prioritized. And has already been mentioned several times, but the dollar amount has not, is that the supervisors on this board voted to adopt an inequitable map. And as a result, the county paid $12 million in legal fees. As taxpayers, we recommend that this board do the right thing, abide by the Fair Maps Act and the Voting Rights Act to avoid these costly legal fees. And I just want to respond to the person that said, "We're talking about victims." What we're talking about are inequitable systems. That a person who referred about better candy on the west side, I am a mother of two small children that love to play in the parks. And when we go to the west side, we go to River Parkway, that park looks significantly different than San Diego Park in LaMont.
Ma'am, we're significantly over the time already. Can we bring two close, please?
So, we want the $12 million not to go to legal fees, but to go to the resources the communities want. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, everyone in this building. My name is Rosanay Paniaua, and I am a community organizer with Loudford Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Kathy, did you catch the last name?
I did not catch your name.
Could you repeat it?
Yeah, Paniaua, P-A-N-I-A-G-U-A.
Very nice.
So, I am a community organizer with Loudford...
Okay, guys, guys, if we, we really got to tune it down in here, and I'm sorry for allowing myself to get heated. These are important issues that are very emotionally charged. Everybody's passionate. Everybody has something to be, to say and to be heard. So, I'm with you. I promise you, let's bring the temperature down a little bit, let's give each other the mutual respect that everybody in here deserves. So, please, continue.
All right, I'm just going to start all over. Good evening, everyone in this building. Please take a deep breath. My name is Rosanay Paniaua. I am a community organizer with Loudford Tomorrow in Delano. Our organization and Delano youth are members of the Equitable Maps Coalition of Kern County. We support the Equity Coalition map because it is the only proposed map that effectively pairs rural farmworking communities in the north Kern County. Rural farmworking communities like Delano, McFarland, Budenwillow, Shafter, Wasco, amongst others, will be able to stay together and actually vote for someone who understands the livelihoods of rural farmworking communities. It simply makes sense. How can Kern County meet the challenges of the next 10 years if three-fourths of its population, all people of color, continue to be disempowered? You have the opportunity to collaborate with local community members and listen to input directly from people who live here and empower them to be part of the solution. This coalition is made of long-lived Kern County members, and because of this map, and because of this, our map solves various issues that we live with daily, that you don't have to live with. We do. For all these reasons, I ask you to adopt the Equity Coalition maps. And once again, to clarify, this map was created by community members from all over the county. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good evening, Eddie.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Lane. I'm passing out some pictures there. Permit me to begin with two quotes from the Business Journal quarts. "Trees soothe the spirit." Brief times in parks are called doses of nature. What does this have to do with redistricting? Everything. I passed out two pictures. One is of the closed restroom in Kern County's Rexland Acres Parks taken on Thursday. The other is of a closed sign in front of Lake Ming taken yesterday. Lake Ming was closed from Thursday until yesterday for a dragboat racing event, which included very few racers from Kern County. The restrooms at Lake Ming are in good shape. The restrooms in the nearby Kern County Kern River Campground designated for campers' use only are quite usable and open. However, in this year's budget, Kern County is allocating $1.26 million in Kern County general funds to remodel those restrooms. Residents of Rexland Acres are paying taxes to fund a $1.2 million restroom renovation primarily used by out-of-county campers, while Kern County is providing $0 to renovate the closed restroom in Rexland Acres Park. If Rexland Acres were in the city of Bakersfield, it would benefit from the federal American Rescue Plan funding for parks and qualified census tracts. The city is allocating over $55 million for funds for project and underserved areas, including for parks. The county's request to use funding in specified qualified census tracts, $0. However, Kern County plans to allocate $10 million for Wi-Fi in parks, not $1 for restrooms, shade structures, benches, or lighting. Is this because Wi-Fi is a selling point for dragboat racers and lightning-in-the-bottle concertgoers? Kern County parks in underserved neighborhoods do not need a tune-up, they need an overhaul, just like the redistricting needs. It needs an overhaul, as is recommended by the Equitable Maps Coalition. So, Kern County can fund parks equitably for all for much-needed doses of nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel C. Romero. I have been living here in Kern County for well over 40 years. I'm a resident of Keene. In order to ensure fair district representation, I strongly support high desert and rural communities being in one district. I believe this will give us a strong, robust representation that is fair and equitable, a working representation of social services and economic development. Someone here earlier said that it is a vast area, and yeah, quite so, it's a daunting task, but I would strongly recommend for the representatives of this area to come out, roll up his sleeves, and get involved with the communities, get involved with the people. You will not be doing it alone, we'll be doing it all this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, Board. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I do have a dog in this fight. I know you guys are getting picked on up there, and I don't think that's professional, but that's the way one party likes to play, so...
Can I have your name for the record, please?
Dennis Mcllean, M-C-L-E-A-N.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Kern County for 70 years, so I guess I trump everybody else that's younger than that, so here's my take. I've known a supervisor couch for probably 10 years. He was my supervisor in the Northwest, and I think he's a fine, honest man. I don't know any of you guys personally, but I've been up here a few times, and I would have to agree that a lot of these opinions that these people are throwing at you would not stick. I support map number A2. I think it's the best thing for the county. Being a long-term resident, that's my, that's my point of view. And one last thing. Could I have those stand in the audience that are for A2 plan, please? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hola, buenas noches. Good night.
Hello and good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Partida.
My name is Yolanda Partida.
Vivo en Bakersfield.
I live in Bakersfield.
Y quiero decir...
And I would like to say...
Yo apoyo el mapa de coalición de equidad.
That I support Equity Map.
Porque divide mejor las líneas y nos pone con comunidades que comparten...
Because it best defines the lines, and it places us within communities...
Que comparten...
That share...
Nuestras necesidades.
Our needs.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good afternoon, good night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
I would like you to read that in Spanish, since we have Spanish people out there that can't understand me. So, if you could read that in Spanish...
I'll read it back there. I have a microphone to speak into and...
Sir, he is actually back in the back. Those Spanish speakers in the audience who have the headsets on are listening to the entire proceedings being translated into Spanish.
Okay. So, I'd like to first address Letitia, who lectured me last time.
Sir, can you give us your name for the record?
Jeff Sanders.
Thank you.
So, anyway, I was told, Ms. Perez said she needed to point it out that Hispanics would vote for whites, but whites wouldn't vote for Hispanics, and...
Excuse me, excuse me, that's what the judge found. I did not say that. I was telling you what the judge found.
Okay, well, it was a racist, it was a race card. So, many of those votes, I did some research, many of those votes for the people that you said weren't voted for, weren't voted for, had little to do with their color or their race. It had to do more with character and their politics.
Have you talked to all of them? How do you know?
I looked them up. They have this thing called the Internet.
Where the gospel truth is, I see.
So, anyway, it all boils down to a racist distancing, much like this Equity Map, which pushes, we all remember the statements in the not-so-distant past where they would say, "When it comes to voting, vote for those that look like you." That in itself would be enough for me not to vote for that person, no matter what color they were. And it's racist statements like that that took San Francisco from being a hallmark of a nation to the heat pilot it is now.
Do you think it's racist for the county to have defended the Ku Klux Klan in that lawsuit?
I don't know what lawsuit you're talking about, but I'd like the time to slow down because you're talking to me. I don't know what lawsuit you're talking about.
The Maldef lawsuit that is the center of the so-called racism that you claim is happening now. I simply told you what the federal judge said when they made the decision and demanded that Kern County redraw their maps. All I did was lay out the facts for you, sir.
What's going on right now is segregation by race for political gain. That's all this is.
That's what the judge said, too.
Well, that's what's going on right now. So, if you just go with A2, which has already been approved by the court basically three or four months ago, then it's got a slight change solely by population, not by race or color. So, I'm just saying, we need to be, to assemble, to be one nation, Americans, not Mexican, not Indian, not black, Americans. As Americans, we should stand together. We should assimilate, not, not be segregated. And these maps that are trying to pour more power to wonder, more power to a liberal bent than just common sense. As a county, we should be a representative for common sense and law and order. We should be a sanctuary state for standing up for American rights. Be a part of the American dream, not send us back into segregation.
I respect your opinion, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Mirna Elbir.
My name is. My name is.
Elbir. Soy residente de la comunidad de Lamont.
I am a resident of the community of Lamont.
Estoy aquí representando el mapa de coalición de equidad.
I am here representing the equitable map.
Para mí es muy importante expresarles algunas dificultades que tiene mi comunidad.
It's very important for me to express some of the difficulties my community is going through.
La cual tiene mucho que construir, arreglar las calles.
It needs a lot of construction, a lot of work on the streets.
Es un problema muy grande en mi comunidad.
That's a very big problem in my community.
También existe otro problema muy grande.
There's also another very big problem.
Lo cual veo mucha gente indigente en mi comunidad.
I see a lot of indigent, poor people in my community.
Gente viviendo en la calle.
People that live in the streets.
Pudiendo provocar un accidente.
They can easily provoke an accident.
Y lastimosamente ser lastimados.
And unfortunately, they can themselves be.
Por otras personas o carros.
By other people or other vehicles.
Y es un problema, es alguno de los problemas de mucha preocupación en mi comunidad de Lamont.
That's one of the big problems that worry us in Lamont.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Buenas noches.
And good night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Buenas noches.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Laura Cruz.
My name is Laura Cruz.
Y apoyo el mapa de coalición de equidad.
I support Equity Map.
Tenezco el distrito número cinco.
I reside in District Number Five.
Y vengo a decirles, por favor.
And I'm here to tell you to please.
En esta área todavía tenemos fosas sépticas.
In that area, we still have septic tanks.
No tenemos un parque en el cual podamos, puedan nuestros hijos.
We didn't have a park for our children to play.
Disfrutar de un buen día.
To enjoy a good day.
No tenemos banquetas.
We do not have sidewalks.
Nuestras calles están en muy malas condiciones.
Our streets are in very bad condition.
No tenemos luz eléctrica en las calles tampoco, no tenemos lámparas.
Do not have electric streetlights.
Los invito a visitar nuestra comunidad para que vean las condiciones en las que estamos viviendo.
I would invite you to visit our community so you can, for yourself, can see the conditions that we live under.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker, please?
Hola, buenas noches a todos.
Hello, good night to everyone, or good afternoon to everyone.
Mi nombre es Carmen Garcia.
My name is Carmen Garcia.
Tenezco la ciudad de Bakersfield.
I live in Bakersfield.
Y en este momento.
At this moment.
Vengo atollando el mapa de coalición de equidad.
I'm here to support Equity Map.
La razón de esto.
The reason for this.
Es porque me gustaría que tuviéramos mejores oportunidades en nuestra comunidad.
Is because I would like to see us have better opportunities in our community.
Que nos tomaran más en cuenta.
To take us into account.
Sobre todo porque nuestra comunidad.
Above all, because our community.
Está más poblada por hispanos.
Is more populated by Hispanics.
Y a veces siento que nos están marginando un poco con ciertas apoyos en nuestra misma comunidad como luz.
Sometimes I feel that we're being marginalized with the support in some of the things we see, like the lights.
En nuestras calles, hay calles muy oscuras.
We have some very dark streets.
Pavimentación muy mala, muy.
The pavement is really poor.
Muchos huecos, muchas, hay áreas.
A lot of potholes.
Que están muy olvidadas.
There are some areas that have been neglected.
Yo sé que tal vez ustedes conocen Bakersfield.
I know that perhaps you are familiar with Bakersfield.
Pero tal vez no se han adentrado en donde en realidad necesitamos de su apoyo, de su ayuda.
But perhaps you have not entered the areas where we need your support and your help.
Esos son unas de las pocas cosas que les puedo mencionar.
Those are some of the few things that I can bring up to you.
Y les doy las gracias por escucharme.
And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Cecilia Delgado. I am a community organizer with the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I serve the community of Lamont, Arvin, and Bakersfield. And on behalf of my vecinos who live in Arvin and Lamont and were unable to come, I am speaking on their behalf, and they also support the Equity Coalition Map. There is many, many, many things that need to be addressed in those two cities, and the list goes on and on. So I am here basically to say, please look into, take that into consideration and adopt the maps. Also, for the record, in previous comments that I have provided, I did not say that we don't want to share the same area with Seven Oaks and Lamont and Arvin. Basically, what was said is that we don't share the same common interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
My name is Janine Adams. I live in Tehachapi, and I'm a voter in District Two. I'm a member of the Equitable Map Coalition of Kern County. What do all the maps apparently supported by this board have in common? They don't draw any of the five supervisors out of their districts and keep the boundaries more or less the same. Kern County has changed significantly over the last decade. The current districts were drawn based on 2010 census numbers, back when there were 53,000 fewer people here in Kern County. The 2020 census numbers make it clear, very clear, that Kern County has a majority of people of color, and new districts, lines must be drawn to create effective Voting Rights Act districts. Will the new boundaries reflect who we are now? Don't be naive. This board is organizing support for their choice, Plan A or Plan A2, or as I call it, the Incumbent Protection Plan, a map with little change as humanly possible. Plan A is a plan that will fail us all over the next 10 years. It will cost Kern County taxpayers millions of dollars in order to defend a potential lawsuit, and when this lawsuit is lost, as it was with Luna, additional millions of dollars will be spent covering plaintiffs' legal costs. Taxpayer funds should not be kept to keep politicians in their jobs. These dollars should be used to benefit our communities. Let's remedy this situation by selecting a strong map. I support the Equitable Map Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening. My name is Mercedes Macias. I'm a resident of Tehachapi and born and raised here in Kern County and had a great opportunity in education, and I'm going to receive my master's in public administration in December. I decided to do that because I wanted to work and protect my community and see it grow and prosper. I am speaking to you in support of the Equitable Maps Coalition because I took part in that and I helped create that map. A lot of community members from all over helped create that map, and we all had different interests, different backgrounds, and, you know, we all came together and really understood each other and what we needed and how we can get that and how we can see Kern County be better. I had the opportunity of bringing a film crew from LA to see Kern County, and I took them all over. I took them to Eastside, and I told them, "I'm sorry, but in East Bakersfield, there's better food, in Mexican food than in LA." I, you know, took them to the Bluffs so they could see the miles and miles and miles of oil fields that we have. I took them downtown. I took them to Oildale, and I just tried to tell them how wonderful Kern County is. You know, as a community organizer in Kern County, and I've gone other places, people ask, "Really? You want to stay in Kern County with that air that's just so terrible that hasn't been, you know, reaching 1997 EPA standards? You want to raise a family there when people have no clean water? You want to raise a family in a community that education is not a priority?" And I tell them, "Kern County is such a beautiful place, and we can make it better." And as a community organizer, I want to help empower people to do that, and I think that this Equity Map is the way to do it, and I hope that you all adopt it. And I will say, I don't think it's right or fair for Letitia Perez to have to be the only person to explain constitutionally protected classes. That should be on all of you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Pollock, and I am a member of District Three.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Kelly Pollock.
P-O-L-I-C-K?
P-O-L-L-A-C-K.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I am a member of District Three. I am also a public health analyst. I study public health. And in 2020, I had, I don't know if it's the misfortune or the opportunity, to discover COVID-20 or COVID-19 and its impact throughout 2020 and how it has impacted this community specifically. When it first came here, you could see certain areas of Kern County get hit harder, and today you can still see that disparity. Wasco, Shafter, East Bakersfield, these are communities that have been hit the hardest. Kern County, according to the CDC, has a current rate of 6% positivity rate of COVID-19. However, in those communities, it's as high as 24%. 24% is astonishing. Throughout this process, you could see where the inadequacies are in regards to clinics, hospitals. We do not have adequate health care for any of our population in this community, but specifically through this crisis. Our hospitals in this community have been at capacity or overcapacity since September, and that is a risk for all of us, not just those suffering from COVID-19. Furthermore, you can see how the disparities have affected income and how it has impacted communities where people are having to interact with the public more often. Those are certain industries that have been impacted more greatly. They have higher instances of COVID, and they have less support. So I am a member of the Kern Equity Map, and I urge you guys to consider all of the community interests when you are deciding on the new maps. And like me, I hope you see this as an opportunity, an opportunity where you can better meet the needs of this community. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Otilia Curiel, and I am here to. Sorry. Otilia, O-T-I-L-I-A-C-U-R-I-E-L. And I am a Kern County resident, not for a very long time. I've only been here 11 years, but I love Kern County, and I am part of District Three. And I'm here to support and to implore you to support Map A2. The eastern boundaries are an important consideration. This new map has additional strength in that the Map A2 is in compliance with the legal perimeters of the Voting Rights Act. It is also a fair map for all of Kern County constituents regardless of skin color or ethnicity. This place is so diverse, and it's such a great county, and I thank God for bringing us here from the San Fernando Valley. Fairness, fairness, equality is for all, and this county is very blessed. And we do need to consider that someone mentioned about the candies on the west side and the east side. I live on the east side, and I bought good candy for my kids. So it's, we make our, we make our city, we make our streets. We're not victims. I agree with the lady that spoke earlier. I am not a victim. I love this nation. I love this country, and I love this county, and I implore you to consider Map A2. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening. My name is Harlan Ode, that's spelled O-D-E. I wanted to talk tonight neither as a union spokesperson or the Dolores Huerta Foundation spokesperson, and I think the only person I have not heard tonight is Dolores Huerta, unless you're in the audience somewhere. I think what is important to see here is that the existing map, as was just mentioned, is fair and equitable as it is. It meets all the requirements, and to change it based on what a union says or any other group is ridiculous and not serving the community, the rest of the community. All you see is a very narrow focus of the community currently as they're lined up back here, wearing their masks. And so that's possibly to hide their views. I do not know, but I would say that, is it mean that every time there is a lawsuit, you're going to change your votes or whatever, or a threatened lawsuit as there has been tonight, or if we have to change it because 100,000 people come across the border every day, every year? I don't know. So we need to think about, you know, looking at it equitably and not based on what some union says or some foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Excuse me. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches. Soy Ruby, soy de Arby.
Ruby, qué?
Colmenares.
¿Cómo?
Ruby Colmenares.
Good afternoon or good night. My name is Ruby. ¿Cómo?
Colmenares.
Colmenares. I'm from Arvin.
Estoy aquí para apoyar el mapa de coalición de equidad.
I'm here to support Equity Coalition Map.
Porque yo quiero que apoyen más en Arby, los parques.
I would like to see more support in Arvin, including parks.
Ahorita los baños están cerrados, no hay agua para los niños.
Right now, the restrooms are closed. There's no water for the children.
Yo he llevado a mis niños a hacer ejercicio ahí, y he tenido.
Taking my children to exercise there.
Y he tenido que irme porque necesitan el baño.
And I've had to leave the park because the children needed to use the restroom.
Así que, por favor, les pido que se nos pueden apoyar.
So please, I ask for your support.
Y estando aquí.
And while I'm here.
Quiero dar las gracias.
I would like to thank.
A todas las personas que he ido que nos apoyen.
All the people here who I have heard support us.
Yo trabajo en el field.
I work in the fields.
Yo llegué de los 16 años.
I came here when I was 16 years old.
Ahorita tengo 17 años trabajando en el field.
I've been working in the fields now for 17 years.
Amo mi trabajo.
I love my work.
Y les quiero decir que no vine a robar el trabajo a nadie.
I came to tell you here tonight that I did not come here to steal anyone's job.
Vine a hacer el trabajo que muchos no quieren.
I came here to do the work many people refuse to do.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
I had a prepared speech. My name is Sharon Briel, B-R-I-E-L, but as I'm standing here, I'm going to change it just a little bit. I am a retired KHSD director, and I'm on the executive board for the Kern Coia chapter of the Sierra Club, and I am in support of the Equity Maps Coalition. I want to speak to the fact that it's really clear to me that disadvantaged communities are not getting a fair shake because they're not, they don't have enough representation on these boards. You've heard the concerns about parks and sidewalks and flooding in Lamont and all the things that are going on, so it's obvious that something is wrong, that the representation is not adequate for those folks. So that's why the Coalition Map that was built with 12 organizations and feedback and multiple meetings is really important at this point to fix this inequity. I have worked in the food service department for the Kern High School District, and I don't know if most people know, but over 65% of our community qualified for the free introduced lunch program. That shows that we have a high need for folks that don't. That shows that we have a high need for folks that don't have time to get out and vote or don't see it as an important thing at this point because they're just trying to survive. So please, adopt the Equitable Map Coalition Map because it will help disadvantaged communities to have a better chance at a better life. Without that, we all can't do well. We all have to do well by helping each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jose Salvador Oriana and I'm a resident of Delano. I am representing Loud for Tomorrow, I'm a youth organizer. My purpose is to develop the next generation of leaders to hopefully be sitting where you are at. And I support the Equitable Maps Coalition because hopefully that becomes a reality, that one of my youth that I work with that are constantly doing voter registration and are fighting for their community get to be on that seat. But unfortunately, the maps that the county is providing will not make that possible. Because even that, even that Delano is the second largest city of Kern County, it's not being featured. We are being connected to non-Voting Rights Act districts like West Bakersfield, ensuring that Delano and all other farmer, farm worker communities can never have a seat on the table. So please, listen to the youth of Delano, to the people in support of the Equitable Coalition's maps. So hopefully, we could have a fair representation that looks like everybody in Kern County. And yeah, thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
My name is Anna Moreno. And the Equitable Map is not the right choice for Kern County. It calls for unjustified drastic map change when it's not warranted. In my opinion, it's more like the inequitable map. And I'm not saying that to be offensive to anyone, but I say this because it does not represent nor support Hispanics or blacks who have worked hard to achieve their American dream. These individuals have purchased homes or started their own businesses in the districts of their choice. They also select districts with schools that provide the right curriculums for their children. They move into neighborhoods with neighbors of all skin colors and this is what we are supposed to do, not segregate. Like several people said at the last meeting, we should stop living in the past and I agree. So let's not rekindle segregation by way of uncalled drastic map boundaries. The Equitable Map also does not make sense to me. It's supposed to empower a certain group of Hispanics and blacks, but in doing so, it will disrupt and hurt another group of Hispanics and blacks. So where's the fairness? This is why so many Hispanics such as myself do not support the Dolores Huerta ideologies, to hinder Hispanic and black success. I ask that you keep the Hispanic and black American dream moving forward and growing stronger by supporting a fair map that the census calls for, and that's Map A2. And incidentally, I was also, observed the recall at the elections division from about two months and observed over 16,000 undeliverable ballots that were just sitting on racks for weeks and weeks. So Ms. Pesante presented incorrect information and it needs to be corrected. And one last thing, I will never vote for Hispanics just because they're Hispanics. I will vote for the person who shares my values and this is the correct way to vote and not by skin color.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Buenas noches, hello, my name is Jorge Guillén. I was your library associate in City Delano a couple of years ago. I spent some time up in King. I'm the one that painted the wildflowers at Panorama Park. You see me, you see me very colorful. You see me in the streets of Bakersfield, Lamont, Arvin, Metler, MIFAS. MIFAS USA for nobody who knows, McFarland. But the thing is, we're supposed to be here together. In a couple of days from now, we're going to celebrate a holiday that is going to honor our veterans, our veteranos. Some of them who spoke tonight, some of them who are probably in the chambers right now. Somebody, a lot of us have family members or people that we know. It's one flag, I understand that. My people have been here for many generations. I know this because I was able to graduate from Cal State University of Bakersfield and I studied under some really cool history teachers. We live in a fallacy of living in a agrarian society. Where we're able to pick your fruits and vegetables for your sisal salad, do the research. We're able to educate ourselves and tie our bootstraps up and then move forward. But then sometimes, for whatever reason, that American dream that those veteranos fought for isn't necessarily realized in all places of Kern County. I've been on the streets there, I've seen what's happening. And this isn't one cause or another cause, or my cause, or his cause, or her cause. We're all here for the same reason. You guys are all serving for the same reason. And the hope is that we're able to move forward and hopefully, the maps reflect that in the future. Otherwise, we'll be here again. But no hard feelings, all love, all respect. Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good evening, my name is Gabriela Fernández, with an F, Fernández. Thank you. So today, I am here because, as all of us know, we want to make sure that we have equitable maps. However, I want to speak about my own job. I work with the Dolores Huerta Foundation, but I work with the youth department. With the youth department, it's a whole different experience because we work with young minds and we really want to teach them how to be civically engaged. And I think it's really hard to do that sometimes when we come into these meetings where we would love them to come with us. But a lot of the times, we get ridiculed for wearing masks or for believing in a pandemic that has definitely affected all the families we work with. I would love to say that I would love our young people to be able to be here. This meeting is at a time where they could attend if they felt safe enough. But like a lot of us, we just want to make sure that our young people are safe and that's why I come here speaking to you. I would love for masks to be mandated in here. I think it's just unsafe for us to actually be told, oh my God, you're wearing a mask. And I think that we could all work together and I would just love for us to have these maps that really represent our communities. Right now, I live in Bakersfield, but I also have lived in Lamont. And I just want to say, I want to thank you all, but we really need to start working together because it's unfair that all of us who are living through a pandemic, instead of being with our families, we are here fighting each other. So thank you very much and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, good evening, my name is Ashley De La Rosa. I am a resident in District 5. I support the Equitable Map Coalition and I support the Equitable Map Coalition. As well as being a resident, I'm also the Education Policy Director for the Dolores Huerta Foundation, where I work with parents, students, educators, community members, and school district officials to advocate for educational, for a just educational system in Kern. I'm involved in education, I'm involved in education justice because I have seen the education system fail too many of my peers, my family members and community members. I know that the education system does not operate alone and works collaboratively with you because it cannot address, because we cannot address educational justice without addressing the socioeconomic factors that keep pushing us to the bottom of the educational achievement. The COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted already existing challenges in Kern, such as the lack of infrastructure that creates a wider gap in the digital divide. School districts such as Arvin Union School District, Mojave Unified and Villan School District were proactive in finding funding sources. They even went to obtaining tech devices through different means as well as visiting homes of their students to be able to make sure that they have that connectivity. However, due to the lack of infrastructure and inadequate cell towers that are found in the rural farming, desert and mountain communities, this did not work. The inadequate response and the lack of investment in these communities that have happened for years, and not just these past two years, but for years, have contributed to the educational learning gap in Kern County. As a Board of Supervisors, you have the opportunity to address the inequities in educational attainment by adopting an equitable map. We need a map that takes into account all communities of interest and works close to close the educational attainment inequities. As well as tonight, we have heard a lot about the candies, right? And I think that honestly, the truth is that you know where to find the candies and you know how to pick them and that's what you're doing tonight if you do not adopt an equitable map.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elvira Méndez y vivo en Bakersfield. Yo apoyo a...
Good afternoon, my name's Elvira Méndez and I live in Bakersfield.
Yo apoyo al mapa de coalición de equidad.
I support the Coalition Equity Map.
Y lo hacemos porque queremos un cambio, queremos mejores oportunidades para nuestra...
I do so because we want to see changes, we want to see more opportunities.
Para nuestras generaciones, para nuestros jóvenes.
For youth and our future generations.
Porque estamos pensando nada más en nosotros, los adultos, nosotros los...
Right now, we're just thinking about ourselves, about the adults.
Pero qué viene atrás de nosotros, vienen nuestros hijos, nuestros nietos.
But what follows behind us, it's our children and our grandchildren.
Nuestra nueva generación.
The new generation.
Y es lo que queremos, queremos cambios, queremos mejorar y queremos...
That's what we want. We want to see better, we want to see changes.
Queremos que todos tengamos las mismas oportunidades que seamos.
And we want us all to have the same opportunities.
Muchas gracias por escuchar nuestras deseos y lo que queremos para nuestra comunidad y queremos equidad.
Thank you very much for listening to the requests we have for our communities. Good night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Ana Karen García.
Español en inglés?
Español.
Okay.
Buenas noches.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Ana Karen García.
Como?
Ana Karen García.
My name is Anna Karen García.
Yo vivo aquí en Bakersfield.
I live here in Bakersfield.
Y yo apoyo el mapa de coalición de equidad.
I support Equity Coalition Map.
Mi comunidad merece ser tratada justamente.
My community deserves to be treated fairly.
Y también, en nuestras áreas donde vivimos hace falta alumbramiento.
Also, in the areas where we live, we are in need of lighting.
Y más señales de tráfico.
More traffic stops.
Porque cuando vamos caminando, salimos a caminar...
Because when we go out to take walks...
No hay señalamientos para que los carros vayan más despacio.
There's no signs indicating for the cars to slow down.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, my name is Roseanne Wattville, I do live in Rosedale. And I am also a member of the Equitable Map Coalition and I do support the Coalition. We need a strong map to ensure that these underserved areas are equally and effectively represented. One example that really highlights this is the need for Kern County libraries. And I want to mention libraries because I think that a lot of us have talked about education, how important that is. As an educator for 39 years, I almost hit 70. Almost 20, the age 70, almost 25 of which were the Rosedale School District. I've seen firsthand how important libraries are. And they're so much more than a place to check out books, but they're a valuable resource for many people. Besides being a place which houses centuries of learning, information, history and facts, they provide free access to educational news and historical resources to help keep the public informed. Libraries provide a safe place for the underserved population. They help to boost the local economy. They play an important role in English language learning. They make communities healthier. They preserve history and more importantly, they connect communities. For many communities, libraries have been on the front lines of expanding access and creating equity during the pandemic. By providing free Wi-Fi, virtual programming and offering curbside pickup services, libraries have provided an important lifeline during the COVID-19 crisis. They've also been a location for food distribution in many underserved communities. And they're one of our most trusted government institutions and many are dedicated to serving the most vulnerable. It would have been really great if some of the redistricting hearings could have been held at the libraries throughout the county to ensure underserved populations could meaningfully participate. A strong Equity Coalition Map would help to ensure that our public libraries are recognized for their value and their role in our social infrastructure, knowing that the core mission of libraries is to help people elevate themselves and improve their situation, especially the underserved. And I want to point out, I've, not only libraries, but I've heard so much from all of these wonderful people that talked about everything that we do need in a lot of these underserved communities. And that's really what I think...
Understood. Could you bring your comments to a close, there were 30 seconds over.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Just please remember underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
My name is Ivan Sandoval. I'm a community organizer for the Center on Raise Poverty and the Environment. First, I would like to voice support for the Equitable Map Coalition submission. The EMC map was created by taking into consideration environmental concerns voiced by members of the valley, desert and mountain areas. Kern County is a large, beautiful, geographically diverse county. Its supervisory districts shouldn't be so spread out. There's no good reason for multiple districts to include the desert, mountains and valley floor. That's a lot of turf for one supervisor to cover. For the sake of residents, it is in the best interest for Kern County to gain a mountain-desert district. This would mean that the mountains and desert district would have a representative from that part of the county. A representative who could tackle the concerns of residents in that geographic region while the other four districts focus on the residents of the valley floor. It isn't fair for the mountain and desert districts to fight for supervisory attention with residents on the valley floor. Additionally, the EMC map takes into account environmental burdens. I'll use the state's Calen Virus Screen Score, for example. The higher the score, the larger the pollution burden. I'm from McFarland and it has a Calen Virus Screen Score of 86 and 93 in its surrounding areas out of 100. Currently, it is in the same district as parts of West Bakersfield that have scores well under 40. There's no reason why McFarland, one of the most polluted cities in America, should be in the same district as one of the least polluted areas of Kern County. Instead, it should be with other high pollution burden communities such as Delano, Shafter, Wasco, Arvin and Lamont. The environmental discrepancies are undeniable when you look at the official figures. The EMC map takes this into account throughout the entire county. Out of all the proposed maps, the EMC map is the most responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening, my name's Sonia Bennett. I live in southwest Bakersfield and I, in District 2. I am a member of the Equitable Maps Coalition of Kern County. The California Fair Maps Act has changed the redistricting law substantially. And the map recommendations from the county, especially A and A2, that supports essentially a status quo map, ignores some of those requirements. Despite the requirements of the redistricting process to engage public participation in good faith, the outreach done to engage the community was deficient as only the attendees at all workshops were almost all members of the Equitable Map Coalition, kind of like tonight. Remote attendees were ignored or prohibited from speaking due to lack of notification to the public regarding the ability to call in, changes, to make comment. And there were translation issues for some of those meetings. Although this county has done a poor job in the engagement of the community for input, the community has not. The Equitable Maps Coalition attended all workshops and hearings. The Coalition has worked together and with various communities to draw a map that reflects authentic community input. authentic community input and follows all legal requirements. I think you can see by the turnout this evening and in previous meetings that we are quite a diverse group, representing a lot of the areas of the county. Perhaps most important, the equity plan reflects the key communities of interest to be respected in the redistricting process. I support the Equity Coalition Map for these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll call Mr. Jason Weeby up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Weeby with the County Administrative Office. I've been collecting written comments that have been provided either to your board or through the redistricting website. I'm going to do my best to summarize, but I don't know that I can do any better than the comments are provided to people in person here today, but I will add some information based on some of the comments we've received via email, website form, and other methods that people prefer. So there's about a, in the written comments we received, there's kind of a split support between Plan A and A2 and the Equitable Coalition Map, other maps that have been proposed as drafts, which would be B and C, have received no comment or support. So I'm going to focus on those two areas. We received over 130 comments, many more as I was sitting here and hear my phone buzzing, but probably close to 150 now. Many that support A and A2, or some version of A2, were many East Kern residents that were opposed to combining the mountain and desert communities that span from East Kern, Fraser Park, and Taff into a single large district. Residents expressed concern with having one board member cover such a large geographical area that includes a minimum of 17 to 22 small cities, townships, or municipalities, as well as two separate military bases. Also, there was mention of a growing homeless population and residents relocating to East Kern from Los Angeles County. They believe they will not have adequate representation if the job falls to one supervisor for that huge geographical area. They argue that many expressed that moving most of the county landmass into District 1, appropriate funding will not get distributed to their district, and residents feel that A or A2 allows many communities of interest to stay together while making the proper adjustments to comply with the current census data in areas where needed. They support the effort made in not completely restructuring the existing supervisory districts, with many voicing concern that it was done as recently in 2018 through the legal settlement. Some of the diverse economic interests that were mentioned included tourism and recreational activities in the Kern River Valley versus the Tatchby Mountain Community, which is very different with agriculture, wind energy resources, and hard, a large employment population with the state prison in Tatchby. Also mentioned was Ridgecrest, which largely revolves around Channel Lake Naval Weapons Air Station and is surrounded by a high-tech workforce in the Indian Wells Valley, whereas District 2 Desert Areas has Edwards Air Force Base, Armstrong Flight Research Center, and the Mojave Air and Space Port, which require a dedicated focus, plus they have mining operations, cement plants, large-scale wind and solar projects, and other unique district recreational activities, as some of their distinct characteristics that require two separate districts. As I mentioned, we received about an equal amount of support from county residents for the Equity Coalition Map. Some of the points that were made from some of those comments, as it was created with the help, as you've heard, some of this may be redundant because, as I mentioned, many people in the audience express themselves very well. It was created with the help of hundreds of Kern County residents and various organizations that feel it gives a fair representation of all people residing in Kern County. It is legally compliant, follows the California Fair Maps Act of 2019 Voting Rights Act, as well as following the playbook for the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. Many feel that it redistricts communities of interest appropriately and fairly to strengthen their voices of common issues and concerns, which include county policies and programs that affect workers living in farm areas, such as working conditions, health care, and social services, and their common interest with farmworkers who live in the city. Voter participation decreases when moving from denser populations or protected classes to more rural areas, and rural areas should be combined together with these more densely populated protected class populations in areas such as East Bakersfield. Data-driven using key equity indicators, rigorously inclusive through the collection of surveys at food banks, vaccination clinics, and flea markets, and it invited those and anyone else interested in equitable maps to work with the demographer every week for nine months. It's legally compliant and creates two Voting Rights Act districts and one Voting Rights Act Coalition District while keeping communities of interest as whole as possible. The current maps have affluent neighborhoods, such as located in District 4 with ag land and former ag lands that are burdened with pollution and other distinct differences from those affluent neighborhoods. One other thing that wasn't brought up today by anyone in person, but we did get a substantial number of feedback from community residents in the Hillcrest neighborhood of East Bakersfield that I thought was important to address, because I think behind those two, and maybe the Kern River Parkway remaining in District 3, which I think has been expressed here today, the Hillcrest community had some comments I thought as a community of interest needed to be expressed. Residents from the Hillcrest neighborhood, which traditionally runs from north of Nile Street up to around Compton Junior High, Pico, or Bernard, and between Mount Vernon and Oswell, and the Bakersfield Country Club neighborhood, which runs from east of Oswell and north of College Avenue, are communities of interest and should be kept together. Country Club Drive connects these two neighborhoods as it runs both east and west of Oswell. Communities express their concern with a suggested redistricting of their communities from District 3 into District 5, where I believe in the Equitable Coalition Maps, having Bakersfield Country Club area would be in District 2 and Hillcrest Neighborhood in District 5. Their communities share the same churches, restaurants, post offices, schools, and shopping with neighboring areas in District 3. The proposed redistricting move would isolate them from their historic community of interest where they share common issues and weaken their voices of concern. So I wanted to add that, community of interest, which I don't think was represented here in person. Finally, I just want to, we did get several letters of support from organizations, from cities to economic development organizations, to the Kern COIA chapter, which is here. So we did get several letters in support of A or A2 from the China Lake Alliance, some of the Ridgecrest organizations I mentioned at our last meeting, China Lake Alliance, Sierra Coso College, City of Ridgecrest, Coso Operating Company, Indian Wells Valley Economic Development Corporation, Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, Ridgecrest City Councilman Solomon Roger Knottman, you helped me last time, Mr. Chairman, probably didn't get any better, Roseman Municipal Advisory Council, Greater Tatchby Economic Development Council, Taff Chamber of Commerce, the Mojave Chamber of Commerce, all expressing support for A or A2. Letters of support also for the Equitable Map Coalition, the Comité Progreso de la Mont, Kern COIA Chapter, Kern County Democratic Party, No Parent Left Behind, California City, and Loud for Tomorrow, and just recently, and I believe the representative who's here was the Labor Council of Kern, Nino, and Mono Counties in support of the Equitable Map Coalition. I want to urge people to, we try and update it daily, and we'll do so more often, but on our redistricting website, there is a PDF that has every resident and every letter by an organization and their comments, cut and paste, not changed by us at all, but we cut and paste into that, and to look at the diverse thoughts and opinions of all your Kern County residents on that community or that survey and input forum. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Weeby. Okay, with that, Supervisor Scrivener, did you want to jump in right now, or do you want to...
Mr. Chairman, just when you return to the board.
Okay, you got it.
I'd be prepared to speak.
I wanted to check in real quick with County Council. I know at the beginning, there was some information, I didn't know if you were ready to share that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So throughout this process, staff has reviewed all the proposals and reviewed the hundreds, thousands of documents, emails, et cetera, that have been submitted. All of those are part of the record and they've been provided to your board. But because this remains a fluid process, before your board begins its discussion, I'd like to present some suggested minor changes to map A2. There's nothing about the draft A map as it's drawn that violates the law, including the Voting Rights Act or the Fair Maps Act, but in looking at it, a few minor adjustments will strengthen map A2 specifically in alignment with the Fair Maps Act. And if you will indulge me just a little bit, the Fair Maps Act has five criteria to be considered, and these are ranked in order of priority. The first one says, "To the extent practicable, supervisory districts shall be geographically contiguous." Number two, "To the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division." Three, "To the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of a city or census-designated place shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division." Four, "Supervisory district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents." Five, "To the extent practicable, and where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria in this subdivision, supervisory district shall be drawn to encourage geographical compactness in a manner that nearby areas of population are not bypassed in favor of more distant population." In reviewing map A2, staff has identified, and this is with the assistance of our experts, four census-designated places, and you might want to have either Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Scannell really drill down deep on what a census-designated place is, but there are four census-designated places that are currently split, that have a zero population, the part that is split off, has zero population, and could be moved, lines just tweaked or adjusted a little bit to move that portion of the census-designated place into, to rejoin it, so that it's not kind of an orphan piece of a census-designated place. And these areas include a portion of Oildale that is currently in District 1 that could be shifted to District 3, an area of census-designated place called Old Stein that could be shifted from D5 to D3, a portion of Ransburg that could be shifted from D2 to D1, and a section in Shaftor that could be shifted from District 1 to District 4. These impact, right now, there's no population that lives, live in these little sections that are currently cut out. And Mr. Mitchell has the maps. I believe that he can put up and show you exactly the sections that I'm talking about. There are also six other census-designated places that your board might consider looking at uniting these census-designated places. I'll note that these six areas do have residents, and of course, each resident in the county is equally important, but uniting these census-designated places will impact a minimal number of people, either under 5% of the population of that census-designated place or under 150 people. And these are, an area in Johannesburg that would move from 2 to 1, Benton Park from 3 to 5, District 3 to District 5, Pumpkin Center from District 4 to District 2, East Bakersfield from District 3 to District 5, Lamont from District 2 to District 4, East Niles from District 3 to District 5. This isn't all of East Bakersfield, these are very precise little lines within census-designated So as I said, if the technology is working, and I believe it is, Mr. Mitchell may be able to show these suggestions on the screen, including any impact on the plan deviation numbers. So I see, if the board is interested in seeing that, I can put those up.
So while that's getting set up, I'll just let you know that I created a copy of A2 to make these changes, so A2 has not been changed. If you did decide that you wanted to move forward with these changes, legal counsel has recommended that we just call it A3. It's really small changes, and as was mentioned, those first four are all zero population, purely a technical difference. The second set of changes are 5% or less, or under 150 people that are moving. So again, very small changes, and I think we're just waiting for it to show up on the screen there. What I've done is I've been able to make the changes in Maptitude, which is the backend software, and then convert it to that PDF that you've seen before, so we can look at any individual district. The changes really are rather imperceivable, and I can show you an example of, as an example, the two changes in Benton Park and Old Stein. I have up on my screen one it does show, and I can show the existing lines and then the new line, and I think that in both cases, you would see them as being rather inconsequential.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while we work on getting the maps up, it might be as simple as plugging something in.
Disconnect.
Got it, got it? There we go. All righty. All righty, so this is Maptitude. This is not intended to be a nice-looking presentation software, but it is what we use in the backend. And I can just zoom in here to these two census-designated places of Benton Park and Old Stein. A census place in the census is a town or a city council, and then census-designated places are those things that aren't technically an incorporated area. It's an unincorporated area in the county that has a name and is recognized by the census. So in this instance, we have Old Stein and Benton Park. And if we look, I have the current supervisory districts, and I'll make them kind of bigger here, so you can see the green line that is the current supervisory districts. Now this is technically splitting Benton Park, as you can see up here. It's currently splitting Benton Park up here, and it's very imperceivable, the very little part of Old Stein. And when we fix that, it simply does that. Brings this line up here, kind of an imperceivable change over here. Those are the types of changes that we're able to do to bring together and close these rather small changes to census-designated places, and in working with the legal counsel, achieve that goal of, one of the goals of the Fair Maps Act. And that plan is saved, and if we do decide that you want to go forward with it, we would recommend naming that just Plan A3. This is built on top of Plan A2, as we had discussed earlier, which was the plan that had a minimal change in of itself to the existing lines here in the connection between District 5 and District 2, this area here. That area right there. Okay, just, I'm sorry, last thing, we do have it as well as the PDF. If we wanted to see something, the deviation did actually narrow, just a small amount. It went from that 5.1 to 4.3% total plan deviation. Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Scrivener, would you like to start?
I would, but I'm marked.
Supervisor Scrivener, so have some... Supervisor Scrivener, so I have some technical difficulties with this mic. Yeah, absolutely.
We've got to get a little close over here with the chairman, apologize. My, for everybody who's wondering, my screen went black when they did the changes, and so I can't, I can't switch on my mic, so I want you all to be able to hear me. But anyway, thank you, appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to thank staff, our consultants for bringing A2 forward and keeping with some of the comments that I made at the last meeting. I looked at A2, and I had, I had notes down to ask about the, these CDPs, these census-designated places, and staff was well ahead of me on that, and I even had written down A3 as a possible name for it. And so, that's, I appreciate that we're thinking along the same lines as far as that was concerned. But anyway, I don't think that it, first of all, I want to thank all the speakers tonight, particularly the folks that drew, that drove from long distances away to be here on their own time, and for all of those that submitted written comments. Obviously, this is something that is important to the public, as it should be, and we take all your comments, whether we agree with your perspective, take them all very seriously, and I do appreciate them very much. I don't think that I need to get into all of the comments that I made about my reasoning for wanting to maintain the two Eastern Kern districts, but I made quite a few comments the last time, and so I'm going to assume from staff, whether it's our own staff here or from the consultants, that those comments remain on the record. But just for those of you watching, they generally, they generally are that Eastern Kern, the mountains, the deserts, are not just one similar community that can be all lumped together, as some of these maps have proposed to do. They're, they're very diverse in their economies, their recreation, and particularly the issue with the two military installations, China Lake Naval Air Weapons Station and Ridgecrest, which is the hub for Ridgecrest's economy, and Edwards Air Force Base in southeastern Kern. In a BRAC process, it can, it could present a situation where one supervisor could be in a conflicting circumstance and advocating for both bases in that base re-alignment and closure process. And I spoke a lot about that before, a lot of the comments on the record speak to that, and so I'm not going to go in to what that is, as much as to say that that remains a primary concern of mine. The economies of the Kern River Valley are so much different than, than those of the Tatchby area or the Fraser Park area, and I put all those examples that I, that I could think of on the record last time, so I won't do that here. But the other issue is the court settlement that we had with the Maldef case. We created two majority-minority districts, and I would, I'd like to ask our, either our legal counsel, Ms. Raison or our contracted legal counsel, if they could just speak to their impression of how A2, and if we incorporate these changes to reflect these census-designated places, how those would be in keeping with the objectives of that settlement in, in having those two majority-minority districts, and that, and I'm, I am of the opinion that it behooves us to move forward with a similar map because of that settlement, but I'd like to hear from counsel, please. Please proceed.
Thank you. Chris Scannell from Nielsen Merksmer. I agree, we talked about this last time, that I think that there is a real risk under the Voting Rights Act of, given that the court established District 4 as a majority-minority district, and specifically that there was talk at the time of needing there to be a 65% CVAP number to make it an effective district, substantially peeling that back. And most of the other maps do that to varying degrees. There were some comments this evening that, you know, 65% was just used simply because we were using old data. That's actually not accurate. Those figures that we were using at the time were the most recent available. We were using ACS estimates to figure the, the citizen voting age population and to assess Voting Rights Act compliance. So it's not that those numbers were out of date. And I do have significant concerns that a map that, that drops those percentages in District 4 is going to render that an ineffective opportunity district for Latino voters. It drops the Spanish surname turnout, for example, in the last election by five points to move from the current map to the Equitable Coalition map, for example. And if the goal is to provide an equal opportunity for Latino voters, and that was the entire premise of that lawsuit, that's going to be moving backwards in terms of what the court imposed.
Very good. I, thank you so much for that, and I, and I agree. And so, I want to ask a question of process here. We have another hearing that is scheduled for November 16th. And so, would a good course of action for us today for the board to say, "These, these are the maps that we want to consider at the 6th, at the November 16th," basically to narrow it down to, to maps that we feel have had enough public comment on the record, that we've discussed, et cetera? I mean, is that, is that the logical course of action for us to take at this, at this time?
I think so. I think if the board has a feeling that there are certain maps that are no longer worth considering, then it can identify the ones that it wants to focus on.
We've had, Ms. Raison, do you agree with that?
Supervisor Scrivener, through the, through the chair, if I may ask, Mr. Scannell, did you say if the board wanted to post? I just didn't hear the last thing you said.
Well, yes. Any map that the board identifies is coming forward for next, the next hearing, would be posted online at least seven days before the hearing in compliance with the Fair Maps Act.
Thank you.
That's correct. And then your board, if that procedure is followed, then your board could adopt a map after that seven days of posting, if wanted, or continue the, continue the process.
And if we, if we adopt the changes to the census-designated places for A2, and we call it A3, then that's adequate time for that one to be considered on the 16th?
That's correct.
Very good. Okay, well, in light of that, then, I would like to propose to the board, and I'll actually make a motion this time, that we send map A3 and, as well as the map that has been presented from the Equitable Map Coalition for consideration on the 16th. And the reason being is that those maps have received either, either A, A2, A3, or, or A or A2, and the Equitable Maps Coalition, those have received robust community comments. And I, and I think that those two are reflective of essentially two different directions for the board to go, and so I'd like to make a motion that we send A3 with the, the census-designated places changes that, in May Day 2, and then also the, the Equity Coalition map as well. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Those conclude my comments for now, and I'm going to, I think my mic is going to stay hot, and so I'll, I'll try to wash myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivener. Just real quick, I just wanted to say that I think, you know, that the A maps have kind of, you know, they've, they've developed into the, the A3 map that we have now. The Equitable Map Coalition's map has seen a couple, a couple changes, and so I think that that's a kind of natural evolution of it as well. And I think there, the two maps that we have now are pretty well, developed, pretty well spoken about, and I would feel comfortable moving forward with those as well. I would like to hear from the rest of the, the board members, though.
I'll second.
And with that, I will turn it over to you, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so very much. Are you familiar with what happened, the facts that led to the lawsuit now commonly known as the Maldef suit?
I'm familiar insofar as, I think a lot of people who follow redistricting are familiar with that case, but I wasn't involved in it at the time.
Okay. I'm not sure if you're aware of some really critical facts based on what I, the conversation I just heard occur between you and my colleagues, so I want to lay some things out for you. When I ran for the Board of Supervisors, it was in June of 2012. And in June of 2012, this board was made up of a different group of people. And one of the persons that was on that board is the current mayor of the city of Bakersfield named Karen Go. She was the 5th district supervisor. When, when the election occurred in June of 2012, it involved herself, myself, and another gentleman, an African-American male, in Arvin, who had been quite popular there, and the three of us kind of duked it out, and, and in the primary, I won that election. It's one of the elections that the case observed over time. This board, in part of the conduct that led to the lawsuit, that we lost in big numbers, as you know, involved the reduction of CVAP in the 5th district from about 57% to about 51%, which is the opposite of what I'm hearing you say should be occurring in a federally protected district, as you can see. I have no reason to believe that you would be familiar with those facts, except to say that now we're hearing something completely different, which is a federally protected seat should be kept at a certain CVAP. Now, I happen to agree with that statement as a practical matter, because I've been through these elections and I've seen them, and I think even as, even as CVAP in the mid, mid 60s or high 60s isn't necessarily going to produce the results that some people who are observing and are critical of the current political body politic would like to see change. So I just want you to know that part of the suspicion and part of the problem with this process has been that when I ran, my district cut out literally, actually, I wasn't on the board, but the members of this board cut out my hometown, excuse me, my home neighborhood, all the surrounding streets around it, a huge portion of Latino CVAP, reducing me to the lowest under the law, protected by law, presumably giving one or both of those other candidates the advantage by reducing the Latino CVAP. One of those voting members actually ran in the election and is now our mayor. So you can understand that there's a lot of frustration about how these issues play out and the way in which we tell the public what we're doing. It's very frustrating because of the reasons that I just laid out for you. My CVAP in the 5th was reduced to the lowest possible under the law, right? And the other district was made more competitive, and here we are today, $12 million later, in a very embarrassing lawsuit that was totally avoidable. So I am a little confused about some of the reasoning being used, or rather, you know, I have my suspicions about it. However, to say that I do believe the existing D4 should be at its current state, not because it's a practice of this board, clearly the opposite is the practice of this board, if you look at the facts and if you analyze what the judge said occurred in Kern County. So I just want to put that on the record and say that I think there are a lot of good policy reasons to take very seriously the, the map that while the public isn't happy about it, was the result of a very grueling, very grueling, very costly, both publicly and otherwise to the county, process which was very embarrassing. I continue to be embarrassed by it, frankly. So moving forward, you can, I just want you to appreciate some of the context as why the public is so suspicious, is so concerned about the way in which this goes down, because they watched it, we've all lived through it, there's no secrets, it's all right there in the lawsuit, and it has not been the practice of this board to protect a federally protected seat. It's been the opposite, and to fight a new one like hell, let's just be honest. So here we are, moving forward. I appreciate the complicated nature of what this is, and you've been put into a sticky situation. I don't see any reason how I can not support the equity map, given what I see is an incredibly diverse group of people, white, black, brown, all levels of education that I have seen. It's a remarkably diverse group. I don't think it's going to get past my support, but that's just the way it goes. So I wanted to put that on the record. I want to thank you for your hard work. It's clear you know what you're doing, and you're tuned in, but please understand that this has been a very harrowing process, and a lot of people will not say what they really think at that podium. And it's hard for me to hold back as well. But I want to say thank you to you, because you're consummate professionals, and I, and I really appreciate that you're helping us through this process. Thank you.
That's all, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So gentlemen, could you demonstrate for me the changes from map A2 to map A3 as it's proposed, as they affect District 3?
Sure. First off, I'll look at it just as the Excel file. This shows...
I can't see that.
Okay, I'll make it larger, that's fine. Can you see the Excel file up on the screen?
Yes, sir, I can see it now.
So this first set, there were two districts that moved census blocks that were unpopulated from District 1, a portion of Oildale, and from District 5, a portion of Old Stein. And we showed that Old Stein change on the screen.
Was that part of the triangle that it's been referred to?
No, it was that when I showed the overlay of the existing lines, and then I turned them off and turned them back on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Really imperceivable, zero census block area. So that change, and then the only other change that would have affected you was there were three changes where population was taken out of your district. 75 people in Benton Park, I don't know if those are, that's a familiar area, went from your district to District 5. In East Bakersfield, 238 people went from District 3 to District 5. That represented 2.4% of the population. So we had an area, a census place, where 97.6% of it was in one district, and 2.4% was in the other, so in unifying, it made more sense to move it in that direction. And the last and the largest one in terms of population was from 3 to 5 in East Niles, that 1,400 people, again, only 5% of the population, so 95.1% of the, of that census place was in District 5, so we took the 4.9% from your district and moved it over. And all of those changes were made in our mapping tool. You can see, in each of these cases, you can see like, this wasn't in your area, but the idea that you have the old lines and the new lines, and I could walk around the perimeter of your district if you wanted to and show you a couple of these.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, who I'm losing and who I'm gaining.
Yeah, that's no problem, actually. So we talked about this Benton Park, Old Stein area, and again, I can turn...
That was zero population, right?
The Old Stein is zero population right there. And then this, this Benton Park you, that was a little bit of population, but we can show it by turning the district lines off. The yellow lines are the new lines. That's the current lines, the green, and the new lines, the yellow. So very small changes. Then we go to, we'll just walk around the district. This line here is your district, this District 3 in the middle here. And when we walk around the district, we'll find... Yeah, I'm just going to go the whole thing. I can't tell if that's one right there. Sorry. Here we go. Now, this is the Oildale portion, large in footprint, but small, no population. You can see the, the current lines are like that, and you have all these census blocks out here. It's hard to see on the screen, but those all have zeros. And then the new lines is this to keep Oildale whole. And then there were, this one over here, I think, was that in his? I think that's the census block. Oh, here we go, another one. This is the East Niles one. So the current lines come down and follow what probably is very clear, Transportation Arterial Road. However, the state law has now leaned towards the favoring of census places, so under the new Fair Maps Act, they would, they would prefer the boundary to follow the census-designated place, and so that's what we did. We moved that line up to this gold line like that to go around and keep East Niles whole, and that is the tour of the district.
So I want to understand what those streets are.
Sure.
The, where you had the cursor there a moment ago, is that Park Street, which is just on the east side of it, Park above Niles that goes up to Hort School?
So this is Niles right here, and this is the Hart School, it looks like.
Hort School.
Hort, thank you.
I was a road runner in the 6th grade.
Wow. Alrighty. So Niles Road up, this way, and now we're going to be following the boundary of the census-designated place, and you can probably help me get on these names, I can probably make these a little bit larger.
So at Stair steps, is the most northern part College Avenue?
Let me look real quick.
Yeah, it is.
It is College Avenue, yep.
And then it goes back down to Nile Street, and then it goes east, and then it goes back up to College again?
Yeah, so this is College, it drops down and goes back up to College, and then stair steps down and comes across. It's just this area here.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Is this the 1,400 population one that changes? Okay.
Yeah, I'll confirm it by looking at the spreadsheet again. The 1,400 is the East Niles.
And I think there's only one other one. It's on line 12.
East Bakersfield?
Yeah, 238 people.
We can hunt for that one.
Yeah, it's, um...
Is it over here?
It's over here.
That's right there.
Yeah, it's like one apartment building, right there.
Hmm.
Oh, this is the one across from Heritage Park, it looks like.
Yeah, but the old line seems to show it too.
I think that's right, Margot.
I don't know, the green doesn't go there.
Where the convalescent home is, I think.
Yeah, I believe it's actually a little bit north of Heritage Park, more across from, um, like the, where the, closer to Bernard, I think there is a rest...
Just south of Bernard, where the churches are.
Or an assisted living facility.
Got you, okay.
Actually, I'm being corrected by our legal counsel. We can do this live. So we'll just change this line real quick. This is going to go into 5, it's going to come out of 3 and go into 5. And we're just gonna do that and move that over. And then we'll reproduce the maps, but that is the correction to make East Bakersfield whole.
I see. Okay, thank you. I just like to know who I'm losing, so, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Maggard, Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. There's a little community to the north of Lamont called Hilltop.
Okay.
There's a couple of small communities that have a name, but I'm not sure anybody knows exactly what the boundaries are. But I'd like to see if, and I know that you have District 2 coming into Bakersfield and you need a bridge to get there. I don't know if this would cut that off or not. And I've not talked about this with Supervisor Scrivner, but my opinion of this is that Lamont, Arvin, well, Lamont at least, and Hilltop kind of belong together. They're just adjacent to each other. There's, Hilltop much, much smaller than Lamont, but it's similar community. And I'm curious if the, if there's a census tract that we can incorporate Hilltop into the fourth district and still get, that would take it away from District 2.
Is it between Lamont and Fuller Acres?
It's just, it's between Lamont and Fuller Acres, right? Yes.
So then that might be what we just...
I think, and it would also, see if we can do this, could we go down as far as Hermosa Road? Jesse, is it Hermosa? That is the southern boundary of the Bear Mountain Park and Rec District. So then we would have an entire Park and Rec District in one supervisory district and not splitting it up.
So if you can look on the screen behind you, this is Lamont.
Yep.
And the census designated place of Lamont goes up to here. And then the census designated place of Fuller Acres begins here. So it might be a neighborhood or a town that's not recognized by the census. It, so we could decide whether, we could look at these streets to see whether or not it is already captured in this district or not. This is Cam Avenue. I don't know if any of that helps.
Zach, do you want to, do you have any issues with, with that?
I don't actually, if you remember my comments last week, as I mentioned, those, those communities is communities of interest potentially with Lamont.
Okay.
But I, I don't know if, how, how much that impacts the, the contiguity, you know, to maintain that connection. I don't think what you're talking about, if it went all the way up and captured Fuller Acres as well, you know, we need to look at that, just as long as I, I think as long as District 2 is able to maintain that population in South Bakersfield, because, you know, if we, if that isn't contiguous, then, then I'm way underpopulated.
Right.
And then we're back to the drawing board.
Jesse, could you come up to the microphone and ask, is Hermosa, which is the northern end of your district?
Yes.
Does that, would that include Fuller Acres?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Hermosa being the northern street boundary.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? They keep mentioning the census, and in the last...
Sir?
And in the last...
Sir?
You, you can, you can ask what it feels like, but come on up to the microphone and...
You keep talking about these census, what do they call them, census spots?
Designated places.
Census designated places. And the last census, they couldn't ask whether those were, whether you were a legal citizen or not. Is that considered in here?
No.
Not, not for this purpose, no.
So...
This is, this is just total...
This is geography.
Total population and outer boundaries.
Okay.
Okay, one more question, and then we're gonna get back to board comment.
If you can't figure that out right now, could you just take time when, between now and, where you need to, you need to publish it if it's...
Yeah, we would probably best to try to resolve it tonight so that we can give the maps to this, to the county and they can be published.
Can we see what Fuller Acres...
If he needs it, I don't want that fast.
Yeah, I can do that, that's gonna do nothing.
My name is Jesse Garcia. I'm, I was an actual census employee. I was at Census Headquarters in Washington DC in the Population Division. So if anybody has any, and then I spent the past year as a partnership specialist again with the US Census Bureau. So I'm very, very versed in census geography, statistics, demographics. So if anybody or the gentleman, you know, would like to ask, I can, I can assist with that if you need me.
Great, thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I've been thinking about this for two weeks.
Oh, wait.
Since we had our discussion last time. And it's only one question.
Mm-hmm.
You recall our discussion? Where you told me you knew where I lived, you knew where all the board members lived, and how did you, I asked you, how did you draw us all out except Supervisor Perez? And she said she wasn't running again.
Yes.
And you said the data. Your, your answer was the data is what you got, that.
Yes.
The question is, how did the data lead you to number the districts the way you did?
Number the districts?
Yes.
You know what, I tried to keep them as close to where they, they were. Sometimes I have been, I have been asked to change the number system, so...
But the data didn't lead you to...
No, 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 that was my own thing.
Okay.
And again, the question that also you asked me was how I knew where you lived. That was because of the KVPR...
I don't think I asked you how you knew that.
Oh, well, I think it was implied, but anyways. If it is a census question, I'm more than happy to answer, I was federal, federal employee.
Thank you, thank you for the answer, though.
Just to let you know that this population change to go up to Fuller Acres, it would only have an impact of 1,000 people, so around a half a percent of the population for, for a given district. It only takes your District 4, it takes your District 4 down from 2.31 to 1.72, and it brings District 2 up to 1.7, or to 0.71. So if anything, it could help your overall plan deviation a little bit.
Doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt it, the only potential negative could be to its, to the compactness of that district. You're causing that district to snake a little bit more, but you are doing it in, you know, a higher goal of, of keeping together potential communities of interest and census designated places.
That does look a bit odd, I didn't know it was gonna look like that. Hmm.
So it'd bring your total plan deviation down to 3.5. I was just trying to look at the numbers here. Yeah, we can do that. What I'm referencing when I say that the district would be snaking is this District 2 already comes underneath...
Yeah.
And back up. And so it would, it essentially reduces that channel that that population's coming through. Obviously, if you were to go all the way up to this gold line again, it would create a non-contiguous district, so we couldn't do that. But we could come up here and capture that without, without problem.
I think I'm in favor of doing that, even though it makes it look a little odd, but if, if it's gonna create an issue for some other reason that I'm unaware of, then I don't want to do it.
I don't see a legal issue.
Okay.
Would the, would you like for me to just go ahead and make that change then, and we can move on?
Will we have a motion in a second right now? Would you...
I second it, I knew I was gonna ask that question, but I, I was seconding in general terms what he was, where he was heading.
Man, since I, since I made the first, I'll, I'll weigh in here at least first. Okay, so that, yeah, that is, it's consistent with something that I, that I broached at our last meeting, in that I, I thought that that was a, potentially a community of interest with Lamont. Oftentimes, Fuller Acres, Hilltop, and Lamont are, are said in, in the same breath when, when issue's coming for the board. And so provided visually, it, it does, it does make someone maybe say, hmm, why did they do that? But if you think that the, the broader goal of keeping the community interest together outweighs the, you know, the visual, the visual oddity perhaps of how it is, and I'm maintaining the, the contiguous connection to that South Bakersfield area, which obviously has a lot of population, and my district requires in order for me to, me to stay balanced in respect to the other districts, then I'm okay with doing it.
Yeah, and by talking about it for a few minutes, you've answered the question of huh, why did they do that in a public hearing? There'll be evidence as to why we did that, if that's the case.
For the record.
Very well, very well. So I would be happy to amend my motion to include that change, Supervisor Couch.
Supervisor Maggard? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like just one other issue to be on the table before we vote on the motion. Can you give us the C-VAP numbers, whatever the demographic numbers are that we need to have, to give us on the record that confirm for us that that meets the legal requirement? And, you know, I don't want to be right up against the line, I, I want to make sure we're doing something that's appropriate.
So the document that we produced that shows the change, changes, and will be reproduced for the website with A3, shows that the citizen voting age population of District 4 is at 64.8, and District 5 is at 63.1. But I'll pass it off to your legal counsel to describe their legality.
And, sir, is that after the changes that we just made to make the new A3 iteration?
I think if anything, it actually increased it maybe by a hundredth of a point. It's, it's a minimal effect.
Yeah, it would be more than, less than a decimal point, so it would, yeah.
Yeah. In my view, I mean, these numbers are very similar to the current map. I, I think that they are in the range that the court approved, and I think that they are, they are gonna be acceptable.
Do you concur, Ms. Raison?
Supervisor Mag, Supervisor Maggard through the chair, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There's only one, one thing I would like to see, could we take a look at in East Kern at the Johannesburg, Ransburg communities out there? I think that there was a, a kind of a split out there that I wanted to take a look at.
We took care of that.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure before we...
The census block oddity, and it affected two census designated places, we were able to unify Ransburg and Johannesburg.
Perfect.
Just for clarification?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I don't have a button, and so I, I can't, sorry, sorry.
This is me.
We're, yes, we're, it's the old, the olden, olden days way, right? Okay, so the, the, one of the census tracts in Ransburg that's going from D2 to D1, there was no population there, correct? And just, just for clarification, the Johannesburg, the D2 area to D1, that did contain some population, is that correct? I'm just curious as to how much.
Six people.
Okay. Do you know their names? Just kidding.
We can look them up. Jesus Garcia knows their names.
It is kidding. All right, are there any other questions from the board right now? If not, we have a motion in a second. I'd ask Madam Clerk if we can have a roll call vote since Supervisor's monitor's down.
Oh, it just came up.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, let me set, let me set it up for a vote. Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, I want to make sure that I have the motion exactly as how it has been amended.
I'll let Supervisor Scrivner, Scrivner correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think it was to bring back map A3, as well as the Coalition map, to our next meeting and publish them for that seven day period before, before then.
So starting, so that they have been published by next, by your next meeting, the 16th?
Yes, that, now I'm down again.
Okay, I, I'm back up. Yes, that was, that was my intention, was for the A3 incorporating the, the changes to A2, or sorry, incorporating changes to A2, which would be the, the CDP changes we've discussed, as well as the Hilltop Fuller Acres area, and in addition to the, the Equity Coalition map. Okay, thank you.
And that's what I thought I was seconding.
Right.
Perfect, okay, Madam Clerk, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
And Supervisor Perez is absent. The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Having no additional items to consider, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to tomorrow, Tuesday, November 9th at 9:00 AM. Is there a motion? Thank you, without objection, we are adjourned.